Will you do a roll call for the mayor and vice mayor? I will let you off on here. Will that be a roll call?
Johnny's really good at helping you if you say here in the wrong place or yes at the wrong time.
He'll let you know.
You put me by him to help him with the computer? That was a setup for you.
Call the Broken Arrow City Council meeting to order. We have invocation by Pastor Scott Moore.
Hello, everybody. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with this city council to conduct the business of the city. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom, to be with us as we deliberate on agenda items set before us. Father, we pray for the election of the new mayor and the new vice mayor and the swearing in of this group. And we ask that all of these individuals would remain committed to serving the needs of the city with integrity, humility, and wisdom. Father, may they lead with fairness and compassion, seeking the common good of every citizen. We also ask for your guidance in our decision-making, that we may be open-minded, respectful, and compassionate towards one another as we discuss important matters that affect the lives of those who we serve. We ask for this spirit of unity to be present among both council and citizens involved in this meeting. May we work together towards the common goal of building a better future for our city. And may we do so again with respect and understanding and kindness toward one another. We ask all of this in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, roll call.
Franco, here.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Please stand and join Vice Mayor Kristi Gillespie for the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have items B and H to be pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items there? We've been right along, weren't we? We're all on past some really important things. Seems we need to do the administration of the oath of office. Sorry, Your Honor.
Yes, I probably should go down there.
I'm going to administer two oaths of o- two, one oath of office and one loyalty oath. If you'll raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me, aye, and then say your name.
Aye, Kristi Gillespie.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support, obey, and defend
I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
that I will not knowingly receive
that I will not knowingly receive
directly or indirectly
directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or other valuable thing
for the performance or non-performance
for the performance or non-performance
of any act or duty pertaining to my office
any act or duty pertaining to my office
other than the compensation allowed by law.
other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm
I further swear or affirm
that I will faithfully discharge the duties
that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of a city council member for the city of Broken Arrow, Broken Arrow
to the city, the councillor of the city of Broken Arrow.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
And now I'm going to administer the loyalty oath. Again, aye, and then repeat your name.
Aye, Kristi Gillespie.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution and the laws
that I will support the Constitution and laws
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the Constitution and laws
and the Constitution and laws
of the state of Oklahoma
of the state of Oklahoma
and that I will faithfully discharge my duties
and that I will faithfully discharge my duties
as a councilperson for the city of Broken Arrow
as a councilperson for the city of Broken Arrow
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
Sorry, I tried to skip over that. I was just going with the All right, item C is the election of the mayor.
I would like to nominate Deborah Wimpy to continue as mayor.
Second.
I will make a comment about that before we vote. And I was on the council when Deborah came onto the council. She has done a tremendous job in her position. She has set us and helped us to go above the rest of cities in the state of Oklahoma. She's always there to defend the state. Anytime I go anywhere, they ask, how is your mayor doing? How's she doing in her role? And I said, great. And she does extend that greatness throughout the state. So I want you to know, those that are watching, those on TV, is that your mayor is doing a great job and I appreciate it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call. Motion passes. Well, I have to tell you guys, it's been a, it's been a great two years and I'm honored to serve. So thank you for nominating me to, to serve as the mayor of your own hometown. It's, it's a pretty, pretty neat thing and it's, it's pretty exciting and it's an honor. And I look forward to continuing on for the next two years. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Trying in council meetings. Okay. Next up, we have the election of the vice mayor. Seven.
I'd like to nominate Kristi Gillespie for vice mayor.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Oh, I have to, I have to push the button.
My button's not working.
Mine is not either.
It shows up.
Mine says, okay.
I sure worked.
There we go. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right, motion passes.
And could I, could I say something? Thank you. I love this city and I'm, I'm so honored to, to get to serve again as a city councillor and as the vice mayor. And no matter what position I'm in, I'm always gonna do everything I can to uphold the Constitution and because that's the number one thing to me, other than the Bible, of course. So, and, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Huh, okay. Now we're gonna do the consent agenda. We have, we're pulling items B and H. Are there any other items to be pulled?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items B and H.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Vice mayor.
Oh, sorry. I was, I was looking at my grandson. I'm being honest.
Okay. Item B is the approval of the city council meeting minutes and it was pulled so that we can a vote on it and councillor Franco can abstain since he was not, not a councillor at the time. So we're just gonna vote on that separately.
He was here.
Yeah, right.
So I'll make a motion to approve item B of the consent agenda.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. And then item H, notification of city manager's execution of professional service agreements with contract value of more than $100,000. Are you speaking on that?
Yes, I will. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, councillors. First of all, congratulations to everybody. On behalf of the city manager, Michael Spurgeon, we look forward to working with this council. So the item that has been pulled is item H, notification of city manager's execution of professional service agreement with contract value of more than $100,000. First of all, I want to take full responsibility for the title. It is incorrect. It is a notification, but the city manager does not have the authority to execute agreements over $100,000. It should not have been titled that way, so that falls on me. But it is a notification. It goes back to our special events process. So within our special events, the city manager has decided rightfully in this place, talking to our council, our attorney's office, that with Live Golf, they've requested security services, city services for street closures, police, fire, basically kind of the standard that we get into with special events. In this case, it actually totals over $100,000 that they would be reimbursing the city for. So the city manager, working with the attorneys, felt like, you know, we probably need an agreement in place. I think it's actually said a promotional license. Well, that's not quite right either. Promotional is, you think more of Rooster Days or, or something like a Scott Fest or something of that nature where the city is actually partnering with them to, to bring these events. We're not partnering with Live Golf here. We're only providing city services for the benefit and the protection for the health and safety of our public. Specifically, as I said, the police and the fire and the street services. So the city manager wanted to get some type of agreement in place that they would reimburse for those services. That's really what this is, is just an agreement to reimburse those services.
Okay. And I had, I had asked for this to be pulled because I was a little confused about what, what it was because I'm like, surely we're not giving away all those services that were gonna be reimbursed, so.
Correct.
And I am, I, I'm sure some of you have also had citizens reach out to you. I mean, it's in my ward and so I've had quite a few citizens reach out concerned. I mean, they're excited about the tournament. I mean, but they're concerned it's, it's subdivisions that are close to the golf tournament. They're asking if, if there's possibility that we can put up some sort of, not a barricade to keep them out, but like just something that says no parking by the public or things like that. If we have that capability to do things like that, just those subdivisions that are right there, close by.
Makes sense.
Because they're very concerned that their subdivisions are gonna be overrun, people just parking there. And, and just also the traffic control during that time. And it sounds like, so are the police gonna be there to, for traffic control or what are the police doing?
Well, if I may, we actually have the police that are, that have gone through the security site plan with them. Here, can they come down and actually present it? And I think Jill may have, oh, she's already got it up.
All right.
So I'll let them kind of present what we're doing. But to answer your question, we could put some temporary measures out that says no parking along the sides in the subdivision.
And we can definitely like use sort of social media for that as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think that no parking with, during the special event would be good because the citizens that I've talked to, when I mentioned that, they thought that would be a good deal. But they were also wanting to hire off-duty officers and were like, oh, I don't know, they need to spend that. So maybe we can be, like, you know what happens.
Mayor City Council Assistant City Manager, Chief Berryhill. I have with me Captain Josh McCoy is the one's been working with the tournament to devise a security plan, parking considerations, and site security. So I'm gonna let him kind of go through what we've arranged.
Good evening. So over the past few months, we've been coordinating with Live and the promotional groups that are bringing this tournament to our city. Our plan is to staff the road closures with officers. Those are gonna be clearly marked, but also to have other officers that are assigned specifically to address the parking concerns within these neighborhoods that aren't gated. So we plan to have officers that will be running through those neighborhoods, responding for calls for service so we can expedite, expedite that response and deal with any parking issues that we come across. Live has said that they would post no parking signs or they would have some liaison from the tournament that would be in the neighborhoods, talking to these residents and making sure that we have the appropriate people getting to their homes.
Okay. Can you state right now where the plan for blocking Garnett is so everybody can know for the record?
Yes, we are gonna block Garnett just south of New Orleans or 101st and just north of Cedar Ridge Road, which I believe is 106th Street on the map there. That is gonna be the only portion of Garnett that's closed. We're gonna have signs at 111th or Florence showing that it turns into no access there and for residents only. Have another police officer stationed at that intersection to direct people as needed.
Okay.
And it's my understanding, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that the organizers of the events will actually shuttle people in from different parking locations. That way they can access what's, what's closed. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the shuttle sites are gonna be at TCC Southeast Campus and then at Oral Roberts University. And everyone that's getting a ticket to this event, Live has assured me that they're putting that information out to, to all the participants and all the people that are coming to watch in the gallery. So they should know that is a spot for them to go. Additionally, Woodlake Church, which falls over into Bixby, on the other side of Mingo, will be a rideshare location where they're gonna put up a geofence at that location. I've been told that they expect probably about 500 people to utilize that option. The problem with that is it's about a mile walk to the clubhouse and where all the other events are gonna take place. So I think the shuttle, from what they've told me, is gonna be the primary mode of transportation for all these people who will be parking at these sites over in Tulsa to come to our event. They're gonna be driving down Garnett. The buses and shuttles that are gonna be going back to TCC will take a right or head west on Florence, go down to Mingo, and then back up into Tulsa. And the ones that are going to Oral Roberts University will go east on Florence and get on the turnpike and go back that way.
And one last comment while I have him up here, taking advantage of you. So there is a, an assisted living, assisted living home there. And I'm, my understanding is they will be granted passes so that they can have access and the people can still come in, in and out.
Correct. I have another meeting with them actually tomorrow and their leadership team. They've actually given us permissions for their, for us, the police department and fire department, to utilize part of their parking lot that they don't use for some of our equipment, but also to work on getting their staff in and out and then make sure that we can get ambulances and fire trucks in there if needed quickly.
We did a thorough walkthrough with the tournament organizers and they hire a company to do their events. And then Captain McCoy reached out to some previous cities that had the tournament to get some insight on what to expect, the traffic flow, the people flow. This is really, you don't have the numbers of people coming to this that you would, another type of tournament, because it just doesn't have the, the onsite draw of a crowd. It's more of a television event.
And lastly, we will put out mobile signs and anything of that nature to help get the word out, use social media as we always do.
We'll remind people it's actually Broken Arrow in Tulsa.
Yeah.
And, you know, you could just, when they're, if they're in their vehicle, make them turn to the east and not to the west.
We have coupons for restaurants here.
Yes.
You want us to make that a requirement?
Yes, yes.
Now, did, did Live Golf, did they consult the city before making this decision?
Yes, sir. They contacted us, I can't exactly remember when, but quite a while back, maybe in as early as late last year.
So we expected this?
Once they, once they contacted us and said that they were working with Cedar Ridge, yes. They have worked through our special events team.
Any other questions, Chief and Captain? We do have one resident signed up to speak. Lynn Palmer.
Good evening. Congratulations to all of you. So good to see all of you again. I'm Lynn Palmer. I'm a small business owner and developer here in Broken Arrow. And I also live in Cedar Ridge Estates, which is neighborhood adjoining Cedar Ridge Country Club. Lynn, Lynn Villal- Villalone, sorry Lynn, and Todd Bazata from Cedar Ridge North is also here. They represent, they're presidents of the homeowners associations over there. I'm really relieved to hear what just transpired. And I want to thank Captain McCoy and Chief Berryhill for what they've done. We've never had an event like this, this close. And some of those older Broken Arrow neighborhoods, which I live in one of them, they were originally Tulsa County. So the streets are narrower. There is some bar ditch, there's not curbs. And I think it's not only maybe people wanting to come in and creep onto the golf course because they are going to be cutting through private property to do so, right? Same with Cedar Ridge North, the Greens, parts of Berwick are gated and some of the other communities are gated. But if, if we could get some help, I'm relieved to hear that they're gonna close the portion of Garnett off. I think that's helpful. In our neighborhood in particular, if they park on both sides of the street, you can't get another vehicle through, let alone an emergency vehicle. And I think Cedar Ridge North has shared the same concern. So if they could, at least on the interior side of those or the exterior side of those streets, place those non-parking signs and then try to follow up. I mean, we're citizens, we don't really have any, you know, push.
Yeah.
And I, I, I love this tournament. I think it's great. I think it's such a boon for Broken Arrow, for the whole community. But I'd, I'd just like to stay a little bit more proactive on, on how the residents feel and about how their property is treated during this period of time. That's all. It sounds good, as long as I can get some insurance that we're gonna have no parking signs. And if needed, if we can partially barricade off our entrances, we have two. Cedar Ridge North, North has two, just knew through traffic. I tried to reach out myself to Rental Place. This is Mayfest weekend. This is another huge event downtown. You can't find a barricade. I have a lady who is hoarding two of them for me from Mayfest in case we need them. But I just, again, I'd rather be a little proactive here.
Chief, if she has any problems or any of the neighborhoods, should they just call the non-emergency number to report any issues?
So the parking issue, we dealt with this before at the high school. When they were reconstructing the parking lot, we had to go in and put no parking on one side of the streets in neighborhood adjacent to the high school. So we can work with the streets department if we want to do that for this particular neighborhood. Captain McCoy's in the back, so if anyone with you wants to sit down with him or make arrangements to go over the security plan, you can, you can take a look at that. The organizers have a security checkpoints to get into the event. And everybody will have an armband. So anybody walking around that does not have an armband will be thrown off the course. So there's, there's issues to make sure people don't creep onto the course. If they don't have a ticket, they're not gonna be out there. But Captain McCoy's in the back and he'll be more happy to sit down with anybody if you want to go over the plan with him.
I think that'd be terrific. Thanks, chief. I appreciate that so much.
We may have a special member set up, I don't know.
And we may have people that have extravagant cocktail parties, which and they're gonna get the free pass, you know?
So I think most departments, people are building decks on their back porches for this event.
Uh huh, yes.
So a lot of the cars that are gonna be in there are probably invited. And so that will be part of the challenge as far as who's supposed to be there.
Right.
But we'll, we'll make sure the emergency vehicles can get through.
So that was gonna be my question after listening to what she had to say.
I, I think the non-parking on one side of the street, it relieves the homeowners association from having to police. And it also tells people, if they're visiting someone else, to keep at least one side open. Does that?
Yeah, so if we run into the ladder of people parking on both sides of the street, who's responsible for towing? Is it gonna be the city or?
It would be the city street. We can, if we can get an emergency vehicle through there, we can tow a car. So we will have us groups specifically designed or assigned to address parking issues, respond to calls for service. That way we're not pulling people from off of the street, taking away their calls for service from the city.
And we've got some tow companies ready?
We'll find some.
What happens, I mean, like, if, you know, Lynn has a fantastic cocktail party and has 20 people at her house, like she's invited to her house, how do they get in?
Well, we're not gonna barricade the entrances to the neighborhoods.
Okay, so, so everyone comes in.
Yeah, we, we looked at doing that, but the problem is, is how do you determine who is invited, who's not invited? How do you mark the cars? She may have five, someone else may have 20. And so we're really gonna encourage people that if they're gonna have a lot of people come over to cultural in as few cars as possible. So that would be the best bet. But we can work with the streets department and see if we need to do some posting of non-parking on certain areas, especially around the curves and things like that.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple ideas.
So that you guys are aware.
And I think some of those neighborhoods, the Greens for one, and I think Cedar Ridge North also, their covenants, they have fencing on the golf course line. Is that right? We don't. You don't either? So it's, it's those two closest to the country club that I think maybe
will be affected the most, yeah.
some sneak, sneak attacks.
Yeah.
And that's the purpose of the armbands. Like I said, I'm ready to go through a checkpoint, to be searched, to be on property. And there'll be a visible identifier that if they've got a ticket, they can be there. If not, then they'll, yes, please.
Does this address your concerns, Lynn? Do you have something?
How will guests, residents of Cedar Ridge Estate, which is a hard act, how will they get through your barricade at 111th? Just say they're visiting somebody on?
There's not one at 111th, is there?
There's not one at 111th. I think it's, I think it's
It's, it's like north of 106.
It's, it's north of 106. They're trying to
We're not gonna have 111th barricaded. We will have it posted. They'll go through traffic, but residents are able to come through.
Yeah, residents are
That's the loading zone. It is the reason we're blocking there so the buses can draw people off.
Yeah, all buses will be coming southbound on Garnett. And that's where we're gonna close it because there's gonna be all these pedestrians walking across the road. And they're just gonna shuttle all the way south to 111. But we will allow northbound traffic on Garnett up until that 106 or around those neighborhoods there. There are a few private residences there that we will, that we'll get with them and let them know. And we're gonna work out ways that they can get to their homes and get through those barricades. But the impact to that is relatively small compared to those neighborhoods. And we'll be able to get everyone through there.
All right.
Really appreciate it. You guys are doing a remarkable job. It's a great event. Yeah.
So Captain McCoy will be out in the hallway for a few minutes. If you want to get with him, he can arrange a meeting later on. Answer any other questions.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Johnny, it's so good to see you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve item eight from the consent agenda.
Second. With a motion and a second. Roll call.
Franco? Yes. Ford?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Item 10, public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. 10A, recognition of a member of the utilities meter reading team for notifying public safety personnel and saving, helping save lives of a Broken Arrow family. Well, Mr. Wilkes, and then we'll have councillor Ford.
Thank you. Good evening, council mayor, assistant city manager, Chuck Wilkes, utilities director. It's my pleasure to introduce a member of our utilities department team, Skylar O'Brien. Along with Skylar is his wife and his family sitting in the front row. Skylar was out doing his job and he noticed smoke coming out of a home and he called 911. And then he went to the home and evacuated some folks. And coincidentally, councillor Ford was doing a ride-along with the fire department and she got to respond to that. And so we wanted to thank Skylar for taking the time and the courage to do something. So I'll turn it over to you, councillor.
So Skylar actually used to be my intern at the police department. And so as, as we roll out, I didn't really put the fire out. I was just trying to stay out of the way. And so Skylar just came up and just in conversation, how you doing, that type of thing. And then, and then I was like, oh, this is crazy. I mean, because the house was fully engulfed in flames. And he, and just nonchalantly, oh, yeah, I called that in. I'm like, wait, what? You called it in? So then he's like, yeah. And I'm like, well, there was people in there. He's like, yeah, I went to the door. I mean, he was just so like, yeah, you know, this is everyday work or whatever. But I was just, I was proud of him because he was doing his duty, reading the meters. And he could have just like been so super focused on reading the meters and not being aware of his surroundings, which is for 20 years what I tell people to do, be aware of your surroundings. Maybe some of that rubbed off on you, I don't know. But, but anyway, I just, I thought it was important to recognize him because he did go above and beyond. And I'm, I, I had a blast with the fire, fire department riding that day. And I had a blast with the fire department riding that day. And both of our ladder trucks, we only have two in the city, both of them were trying to put this fire out for two hours. If that, it gives you any kind of idea at all. And I just don't think very often that you see both of our fire ladder trucks there. So anyway, he was just calm, cool, and collective, and I just want to say thank you. And everyone did get out safely. So on our way there, we had our headphones on and all that, and there was like a 12-year-old. We got the report. There was still a 12-year-old child in the house. So I sprayed all the way. Please, girl, get her out. So anyway, it turned out good. Their house was probably a total loss. I don't know. I don't know. Look, I'm not firefighter, but it didn't look really good. So anyway, it was just so neat how everyone just did their thing. Like the fire department got right across there, and then they were going in and all the things. So we have a great fire department, and I mean, they were, I 100% like all of us, support our fire department. But I'm telling you, that day, I really got to see them work like a team and just, they all had their jobs in. They didn't stumble over anyone. It was just a fine-tuned machine. So it was a lot to be able to see that, but also see Skylar step up. And he had just passed his EMT, actually, the week before. So hopefully, we'll be seeing him as a Broken Arrow firefighter soon. So that's the goal, even before all this happened. So. Thank you, Skylar. And we're glad his family came too to support him. Thanks for coming.
So we have our certificate of recognition in honor of Skylar O'Brien in recognition of your efforts in going above and beyond by notifying public safety personnel and helping save the lives of a Broken Arrow family. Your exemplary example is what makes the city of Broken Arrow a great place to live. Thank you, Skylar.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to come down and get my pictures. Are we getting pictures?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 10B, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day and the month of April 2023 as Earth Month in the city of Broken Arrow and encourage our citizens to participate in activities such as recycling, reducing, reusing, replanting, and restoring our communities and the planet. Galea?
She's coming down.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Congrats on the newly elected and Assistant City Manager, Mr. Schwab. I'm Galea Albona. I'm the Recycling Outreach Coordinator for our wonderful Solid Waste and Recycling Department. So thank you for declaring this officially the second time now for as Earth Month and Earth Day in Broken Arrow. We've been working really hard, especially this month, to educate residents about recycling, especially the do's and don'ts, and ways to be more involved. For example, this Saturday is actual Earth Day. We have a booth over at the zoo and at Ray Harrell. So we are using those opportunities to educate and engage our residents. And then, of course, the following Saturday is our big Trash Bash and Recycling Rally. So over the past couple of years, we've collected literal tons of trash from our creeks and sidewalks and waterways and serviced over 1,000 people, dropping off those hard-to-recycle items like tires and medical sharps and even ammunition, and especially the big draw of paper shredding after tax time. These events and education efforts just really help to engage our citizens to do the right thing, to do more sustainability-minded activities, especially with the schools that I met with this week. Got a lot of pledges to plant some flowers, plant trees, and just enjoy our beautiful nature out there. So thank you for the official declaration and happy to answer any recycling questions anyone has in their own.
I just wanted to add too, I don't know if you all have seen the cute videos that our communication people have done, and they throw trash kind of around in a pool or whatever. I think it's at Aaron's house, actually. But basically, it's like, you went and trashed your house. Why are you wanting to trash your city? I mean, so great job, communications. That was amazing.
Yes, they are awesome videos. Check them out on the city's Facebook and all social media if you haven't yet.
We've got it all. And then we've, what, we recycled 890 tons?
So recycled close to, yeah, close to 1,000 tons. It will picked up close to two tons with our Streets and Stormwater Department as well. And then recycled, yeah, the tires weigh a lot, so that number gets up there. But each event, we see probably close to 300 people. And especially with working with the senior center, taking on the paper shredding for them, we're getting a lot of, our whole community, all ages, all cultures, everything like that.
Harmon Insurance is actually sponsoring the recycling for the day, so we appreciate them for sure.
And looking forward to potentially some quarterly shredding events with them as well.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay, so I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Earth Day has been celebrated for 53 years since April 22nd, 1970, when Senator Gaylord Nelson from Wisconsin collaborated with politicians and student activists to bring awareness to the human impacts on air, water, and land quality. And whereas the city of Broken Arrow wishes to continue their annual celebration of Earth Day and host local events such as the Solid Waste and Recycling Department's Trash Bash and Recycling Rally in April to demonstrate our commitment to the beautification and preservation of our city's history and natural resources. And whereas the city of Broken Arrow's Conservation Committee recognizes the city's responsibility to engage residents with messaging that leads to acts of environmental stewardship such as water conservation, litter prevention, and pollution mitigation. And whereas our leaders understand small actions can lead to great achievements, and the city should encourage its residents to be mindful about taking care of their environment so our city remains steadfast in its growth and successful economy. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day and the month of April 2023 as Earth Month in the city of Broken Arrow and encourage our citizens to participate in activities such as recycling, reducing, reusing, replanting, and restoring our communities and the planet.
All right, item 10C, Presentation of Final Traffic Control Operations for Remaining Construction Effort Associated with ST 1928, West New Orleans Street and Elm Place Intersection. Tim Robbins.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Assistant City Manager, Timothy Robbins, Construction Division Manager, City of Broken Arrow. So this evening, I am here to present our final efforts to complete the New Orleans Square Intersection Improvements Project. So it has been a long road. We appreciate your patience. So what's up before you is the presentation of how we're going to approach our last efforts of the asphalt. So as we presented in the last council meeting, we are into this next phase. We have completed all the concrete intersection. We completed the surroundings. And now we need to go in and mill and overlay the existing asphalt and the additional asphalt that was approved. And that operations is looking to be in the beginning of May. So as part of this effort, city staff spent a lot of time with the contractor, internally with the AE, trying to figure out how we can do this, protect the investment that we have made with that beautiful blue medallion, with the white concrete, very important when we're talking about black asphalt. So the white bandings, the new pavers, and all the new medians. So to do that, what we're going to have to do is to transition traffic to the opposite side of the roadway so that we can mill from edge of the pavement to edge, so the edge of the curb and gutter to the edge of the curb and gutter. The lanes in there are very narrow. As we've placed in these new medians, it's kind of restricted how we have to approach it. So this is, unfortunately, this is the only way that we're going to be able to put down a quality product and protect the investment that we've made in the intersection. So starting on May, we're projecting the intense to start on May 1. The transition will be similar to the Phase 1 configuration that we had when we first started the project. So the traffic will be transitioned to the east side of the road while we'll be working on, so east side of the road, north and south, and then on to the south side of the road, going east and west. So in all of the quadrants that we will now be opening up, we will start and mill, and then lay down. We'll mill the asphalt, and we'll place down the new asphalt. And then we'll transition through the intersection on all four legs. Then a similar configuration will be swapping the traffic over and doing those other legs at that time. So starting on May 1, we'll be implementing this. It will be lasting around three weeks. The asphalt will start as a little bit of a delay as we are working on the center medians, trying to work on the great entry plazas that'll be going on those as well as planting. So there'll be a little bit of lag from the time we transition, but that'll be what's going on there. And then we'll transition to asphalt, and then finally striping at the very end. And I can answer any questions if you have.
So how long, so it'll be three weeks, no left turns?
That is correct. So it'll be no left-hand turns through the median portion of the project. So that's where the limitations are. So we'll be extending them out, as well as on the west side, we will be extending that configuration out to where the limits were pushed out by Taco Buena near the U-Haul area. So we'll have that on that side. A lot of asphalt to mill and lay over there.
Yeah. Well, for people that maybe weren't watching or weren't aware, we approved additional, at the last council meeting, we approved additional asphalt to cover, you know, just other areas that had kind of deteriorated during construction. But I mean, I'm all, I know it's a kind of a growing pain, but it's going to be awesome when it's all done. And it's going to be nice and smooth and no potholes. So.
What was the longest timeframe that we did no left turns prior?
So we had no left turns starting in June and went all the way through till January.
Oh, so this should be...
Yeah.
This be...
And they're so used to no left turns.
We will put out all of the appropriate signings like we did last time. We'll be rolling out a social media campaign as well. We've already coordinated, I've got coordinations with the schools. They will alter their bus traffic as well, similar to what we did last time. And we'll have message boards if we can get, we have internal message boards and external message board to get them. So a lot of message boards out in the city. So we'll make sure we get the media and messaging out.
Are the buses going to be doing that alternate route again like they did?
I will have to defer back to the schools on that one. We have not talked that fervently. They know this is coming. They will go back to their alternate routes.
Okay.
They'd have to.
And I like, I've seen the sprinkler system, all that stuff is being done.
Irrigation is full underway. There'll be backfilling. With any luck, we should be seeing some trees here any day.
So is this the last time that we're going to have flames closed?
So when we get out of this, the intention will have a small transition for the striping. And then after that, it'll be isolated lane drops. So we, this is, we're trying to have all of the in-curbway areas done. So the bulk of the roadway work done after this. After that, we're going to be trying to work on the odds and ends, the little plantings, some minor stuff from the backside as much as we can. After that, we'll have just a couple lane drops to, it'll be isolated here and there. And hopefully, we can make sure that they don't last through traffic hours. So we'll get through main traffic, bump them out, do what we have to, and then bump them back in.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, if I may, make two comments. One, I want to thank the public. It was April 19th of last year that we advertised for bids. So it's been one year since we actually advertised, brought back a reward, and got the project started. And it's amazing at how the public has worked with us going through this intersection. The messaging has been fantastic, both from our side and from the school, the merchants, everybody. Growing pains are rough, but everybody's worked with us, and I just want to thank the public. And secondly, Tim, is there a four-way stop? Is there an issue coming this week?
That's correct. So tomorrow, for around 30 minutes at around 9:00 to 9:30 in the morning, we will be transitioning from the old traffic system to the new traffic cabinet. And we'll have to go to a four-way stop for around 30 minutes to 40 minutes to get that transition to happen. So we'll have it after traffic hour and make it easy.
We did this once before, but I just wanted to note to the public, just to be aware, we'll still get the message out. But I know there are people that watch our council meeting and watch the highlights. So about 9:30 or 9:00, what'd you say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's just a 30, 45-minute thing tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It's going to look so good when it's finished.
It's already looking, the lights look amazing. They look really good. So it all looks great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Do we need a motion for the presentation?
Not necessarily. I just had them there as directed.
Okay. All right, item 11, Citizens' Opportunity to Address the Council. There are none. Item 12, General Council Business, 12A, Consideration Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Cooperative Effort Between the City of Broken Arrow and John 316 Mission to Establish a Campaign for Contributions as an Alternative of Giving to Panhandling. Chief.
Mayor Council. Mayor City Council, Assistant City Manager. Just tomorrow, from 9:30, I'll be out of my office for 30 minutes. Don't call me. I won't be answering the phone. I have two people with me. I have Captain Stephen Garrett and Public Information Coordinator Ethan Hutchins. This item came up, and, you know, we've been talking about panhandling quite a bit. And we wanted to approach this community issue with compassion. And so thanks to the mayor, we met with her several times and her contacts with John 316. There is a similar program, much like this, in Tulsa, alternative giving for people that are panhandling. We're taking advisement from the mayor to try to figure out something that was applicable to Broken Arrow, and we can make it our own. And so I've tasked you two gentlemen behind me with coming up with a plan. So they've got a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council. Again, my name's Captain Stephen Garrett. I'm the commander of the Office of Professional Standards and the Public Relations Unit also falls under my purview. So what we've been doing for the last several months, and I want to thank Mayor Wimpy up front for all the hard work she's also put in on this, looking for not only an alternative to panhandling donations, but to see how we as a city can address this issue, you know, as a whole, as opposed to maybe a single donation to each person. What can we do to address the issue in a totality perspective? So changes to the city ordinance recently. In 2020, the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals for Oklahoma City's Panhandling Law was taken to task, basically, in the 10th Circuit. It was considered to be unconstitutional and violated free speech. Oklahoma City had to change its law. Since then, several cities have kind of followed suit. And Broken Arrow also changed its law on panhandling. And what the city of Broken Arrow has done is we, you know, we have a duty to protect the rights of all citizens to exercise their First Amendment rights safely. But the provisions that we've put in place limit where and how panhandling can take place. So the provisions that we put in our aggressive begging ordinance, which is 16-19, it's not allowed under our ordinance to panhandle within 20 feet of an outdoor seating area or cafe, restaurant, other businesses, ATM, public toilet, or pay telephone. I don't know when the last time we've seen a pay telephone.
Just in case they come back.
It's in there.
They may come back, so.
We also limit within 50 feet of any mass transportation stop, including but not limited to a school bus stop, within 50 feet of any land owned by a public or private school. After dark in public places is also prohibited. And that's a safety concern naturally, just because it's dark. And then the panhandling of minors less than 18 years of age. So that's the steps that we took as a city initially.
I just have a question on, I thought they couldn't also panhandle on the center median. I knew that the firefighters could during their fundraiser on Labor Day, but...
So if they're in the right of way, they can?
Like in the middle of the street, like cars are going this way, cars are going this way, like right there.
They have to be off the road on the right of way.
Can they be on the median?
They can on the median? So who says that? That's the law? Like, do we get ordinance? Can we change that?
I can speak to that.
You have...
You're on now.
You have to look at what the definition of highway and the shoulder is. And so each area is going to vary, and it's going to differ depending on how much area on that highway is going to be available for shoulder use, which is typically where a car can pull over, you know, get off the main road. So as long as they're in the shoulder area, that's going to be allowed. They can't go into the actual roadway. And so that's what the definition is under our aggressive ordinance and under the state statute.
So they have to go through the roadway, though, to get onto the median?
They're like at 71st and Garnet, if you can just picture that area. There are sidewalks on both sides, but then there's a center median. That's where they are a lot with their, they have their traffic vests.
Yeah, that's not considered the highway or the roadway. So there's no prohibition from being in a median shoulder area. Again, there's First Amendment rights to, you know, solicit in certain public spaces. And if you look at what the, the access points are in terms of health and safety, the roadway is a dangerous area. You can't walk down, walk out into the road and solicit.
But they do have to walk out on the road to get on the center median to solicit.
Well, again, it's gonna depend on which specific locations. I don't have, have that map in front of me, but if somebody can safely, you know, cross at a designated crossing area into a median, it's gonna be site-specific for what you have on the street.
I would say, I would say there would be places in our city like 71st and Garnett, 71st and Aspen that they're doing that, that's not safe and they could get hit by a car because they're not using the crosswalk and to get on the center median.
Isn't it part of our ordinance that they can't approach your vehicle like?
They can be in the shoulder.
Right.
They can't walk out into the roadway. That's what the specific provision in the aggressive panhandling ordinance says.
Because the difference in the median, like if you're on the shoulder, you're not, you can't like touch somebody's window from there. But if you're in the median, you can literally touch. And I'll, I'm gonna say, this has happened, this literally happened to me. I had my hand up and they were, they came up and talked to me and they said, "Nice ring", and touched my ring. And I mean, they could've just grabbed my ring off my finger and they were in the, they were on the shoulder. And so, I mean.
Well, physically touching you would violate our aggressive panhandling ordinance. And so, in that case, you know, a citizen could call the police.
That's an assault also, so if they reach out and touch you.
But I mean, and I, at the time, I mean, I wasn't gonna call the, I mean, I was like at a stoplight going somewhere, so who's gonna call the police? That's what worries me. It's those kind of things that, and this happened a while ago. This hasn't happened since I was a counselor. And so, it's, it's made me not ever open my window to people because it freaked me out. But, I don't know. It was, it's just one of those things where if they're that close, I mean, on the median, they're close to you.
Really close. So, maybe we can address that at some point.
Yeah.
Well, and we certainly understand that it can be a concern for safety, but that's the delicate balance that we're also tasked with in reference to that, that safety concern with their, their right to free speech. And we certainly have a delicate task to balance that.
Okay, with their right to free speech on that side of the road and that side of the road, just not in the middle of the road, on the median.
Part of the nearly $1 million judgment against Oklahoma City was as they addressed that issue, they said it might, might be unsafe and they cannot produce a single incident where someone panhandling was struck by a car. And so, we have to show harm, to show a need to change the ordinance specifically to be that narrow.
That's right. The chief's correct on that. And so, we, we, we tailored our ordinance in the, the most, to we can accomplish what council wants, but in a way that would survive, you know, constitutional challenges and hopefully avoid any similar type judgments.
Well, that's why all the people should listen to what we're gonna talk about next.
That's right. We need to train our people.
Yeah, we train our people.
Our very generous people, yes.
So, just moving forward a little bit on the calls for service, this is what we've experienced over the last four years. In 2020, we had 24 calls for panhandling, two a month basically. That had doubled in 2021. By 2022, we saw another rise of 25 or so, 26, I believe, if I'm doing the math correctly. And then this year so far, and that's up until April the 5th, which is basically the first quarter, we've had 25. So, as many as we had in 2020 within the first three months.
I feel like your calls for service may have gone down, but the calls for service to me has definitely gone up.
Yes, definitely.
No, we're not, this isn't indicating that they went down at all. This is just the first quarter.
The first quarter, yeah.
So, we're expecting about 100 calls for service for panhandling this year. So, that would be an increase from last year also.
Okay.
So, it's kind of increased to about 25 calls a year.
Okay.
So, that's kind of what we've looked at. Yeah, that last column is just through the first three months or so of this year. So, what we did is we also looked out at some of our surrounding communities and the City of Tulsa implemented a Change the Way You Give program. And the council adopted a Panhandling Donation Alternative and that was the name they gave to it for Change the Way You Give. We met, and Mayor Wimpy also met with us, and I wanna give a thanks to also Aaron McCullough and Ethan and the chief. We met with John 316 and we kind of created our own text to give Panhandling Donation Alternative for Broken Arrow. 100% of the donations benefit their nonprofit and the City of Broken Arrow has kind of designed some signs, giving that makes sense is what we have came up with.
C E N T S.
Yes. We think that that is definitely indicative of what we're trying to do here, something that makes sense. And it's a donation alternative to panhandling. This one here on the right, that's Tulsa's sign for their initiative. And as we move forward, this is the sign that we like. And it just says, Donation Alternative to Panhandling. What you can do is text BA to that number, 50155, and then we're also providing a phone number directly to John 316 Mission. And 100%, of the donations again support the, the John 316 Mission.
I do like this sign. I saw them at Tulsa's while I sent them to Spurgeon a while back and I did like where it says, "If you need food, housing, or help, enter the number to call." Like, I feel like that kind of encompasses everything and I do like that we made our own sign.
Yeah. Yes, we feel like ours is better and we feel like it's more specific. What we wanted to make sure, and we could've kind of tagged along to the Tulsa initiative, what we wanted to make sure was what we were doing was more specific to our community. And, you know, nothing to knock Tulsa's initiative, but it certainly was gonna be more geared toward the Tulsa metro area. We wanted to do something that was specific to our, our city.
I mean, I think they're very creative in coming up with that sign originally even. I mean, you know, that, that was thinking outside the box for sure.
We've just shown a few screenshots here of showing you how it, how it's done. It's very simple and quick. You just type 50155 and you can see on the second one there, you just type BA. You're gonna send that text message to 50155 and initially, within just probably 10, 15 seconds, you get a text message back. It has a link on it for you to give to John 316 Mission and then you'll be directed to their page. And it's a donation page. It allows you to choose the amount of the offer that you wanna give. It even tells you on there, if you give this much, this is how many people that will feed. And then it even has another button for you to choose a specific donation and it has some preset donations in there. Once you decide how much you wanna give, you just hit the give button and it goes there. The good thing about this also is we have a way to track it because when someone types BA, then we can ask John 316 Mission. They can provide us data, hey, how many people have given through this specific link? How much money has been given through this specific link? What's the average donation, things of that nature? So, that's kind of why we decided to go this route, just so it would be specific to us. So, we have a sign here and this is something that of course the, the council can decide on, but we had a sign made just to kind of show you what it would look like if we chose to put any of these on some of the main thoroughfares.
So, how will you decide where you put them? Or do we, I mean, how would we decide?
So, this. This is something that we discussed with the mayor in, in the meeting. And once we get up and running and start the campaign, kind of blast it out on social media and things of that nature, then we've discussed maybe down the road just talking about, do we wanna have a few just on some of the main thoroughfares, maybe on Aspen now and maybe one on Kenosha. We don't wanna, you know, clutter the entire city roadways with, with a sign everywhere. But, you know, maybe a few of them, so if someone's thinking, hey, I remember that, I forgot to give. Well, if they see our sign, then they're gonna give under our initiative.
Maybe we could put one like right in the middle, the center median where they would, somehow they get stolen by the people.
So, Trevor, do we, do we do an MOU with John 316? Do we need to do an MOU with them? Partner with them?
I don't believe that would be necessary. There's no city funds that are being expended for this. It's just notification and public education as to how to provide and help folks that are in, are in need of some help.
Does our sign, people make the signs or did, who made the signs?
This sign was made by our street department. It was simply made today so we could display to you.
I mean, it looks good. It looks really good, yeah.
So, what has, what has John 316 committed to Broken Arrow? Because we're putting, you know, we're putting their name out there. So, what have they committed to us?
So, we, we asked them and they said it would go in their general fund. We don't have a shelter here in Broken Arrow.
Right.
But we partner with John 316 in terms of, hey, if we run into people that are homeless or looking for a place to stay. I know in my 22 years here, we've taken people to get them housing for the night. Did you have additional?
Yeah, so when we met with John 316, what they did say, if we have a, so if we got someone at a particular spot, we can call them. It won't be like within five minutes, but they will send a team of people out to speak with them, to offer housing, to offer transportation, to make sure there's a follow-up. So, there's not really a, a good way for us to accomplish this without going through a third party. So, this way it allows us to give to an organization that's gonna be coming out, checking on these people, offering help if they want it. And of course, it's always voluntary. So, we thought it was a good balance, then give us a quarterly report of how much money is given and, you know, your dollars in a small way in an organization like this has a much wider impact than giving someone a $10 bill out the window. But they will send a team out to address, you know, the next day, the next business day, and they're not a 24-hour organization as far as that, to go out and speak with whoever's there to see if they will take the assistance.
Right. So, did you talk to anyone from Tulsa or just work through John 316?
We had.
We, we met with Tulsa before we went this route. Again, theirs was geared more towards the Tulsa metro area and they had their own initiative going and we wanted to do something that was specific to our.
Well, I guess what my question, I mean, the reason why I'm asking is so like in Tulsa, where these signs are, you don't, you don't see the panhandlers around these signs. And I mean, because if the signs are there, people, I guess.
Do you want to put them everywhere?
So, I just wondered, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That decision will ultimately, ultimately not be made by me, of course, but, you know, we, we wanted to bring that option up and show you a sign of kind of what it would look like.
I am super excited about this. When I worked at the PD a couple of years ago, we actually, the John 316 gentleman came and talked to our Rotary Club and he said, I mean, that's when we were giving out like, well, a lot of officers didn't wanna give them out because we were making them too comfortable, which I didn't know they weren't giving them out till they're like, yeah, we're not giving them out. We'd do backpacks and have all the things in them. And he said that we were just enabling them, like the more, and that's what I think our community needs to know, is like, we still wanna be loving and help the people that want help and need help, but we don't need to be enablers. And that's what we are, I feel like, when we're giving them money or giving them food or giving them the backpack with all the, all the things and so.
Yeah, $5 or $10 does not change somebody's life.
But.
But if everyone's getting $5 or $10.
Right. But John 316 could literally help somebody turn their life around because of the services they offer.
Is, is an emergency thing if someone is like, you know, homeless and their house burnt down or something like that. But the way John 316 is set up is they're, so counseling services, they can help them find a job. It's, it's giving with the future and not giving in the moment. And so, I think it's a much better alternative for us.
Yeah. Well, and even back then, three years or so ago, John 316 had business cards they gave us at Rotary and I put them in the squad room and then they said as long as the person had that card, that they would come and pick them up. Like, our officers wouldn't even have to take them if they wanted to go.
Yeah, which is one of the reasons why when we spoke with Tulsa originally, great program and great idea to give, you know, change the way you're giving to make a difference. But I thought originally that, that service was you get to pick the charity you want and donate to that charity and then come to find out, no, it all just gets dispersed across all of their charities that they selected to be in there. And then I asked if John 316 was a part of it and they said no. And I thought, oh, that's very strange because they literally offer every single thing a homeless person needs. I mean, they have the housing and they have the restoration aspect of that and for them to not be a part, that was kind of a red flag for me, to be honest. But, but the, the concept of it was brilliant. And so, that's when we left that meeting, we talked more and you guys have done an amazing job. Thank you. And Aaron, I don't know if he's.
Aaron came up with the sense, thanks, so I have to give him credit.
Good job, Aaron. Love it.
Yeah, Tulsa's a conglomeration of various different nonprofits and this is very specific and I think the more simple the message is, the more likely people are gonna be giving to it.
And knowing it's one, one, one organization that literally has all the resources that are needed for an individual that's in need and you know all the money's going there. It's not being dispersed and only, you know.
And it's just an alternative as opposed, we're not telling people not to give, it's an alternative rather than giving out the window, giving, you know, through an organization. And again, it's something.
It's more effective.
We can track and see the impact it's having as a whole as opposed to individually, to one person.
Right, absolutely.
We are working with the city communications staff to make a PSA, which is gonna go out May 1st, by the way, to let the public know about this initiative.
Okay, awesome. Thank you guys for all your work on this.
Thank you.
I will make, Johnny or Joe, do you guys?
I'm just gonna make an observation that, I've never gone out and asked for money, but if there's a sign there close, I would go someplace else. You know, my marketing skills wouldn't be as good if the campaign was against me because, you know, I want a little bit of money. I don't wanna go down to somewhere and, and have something really taking care of life-changing. I'm looking for the $5 or $10 that's just gonna get me going. So, I think that the few more signs that you have up, especially in the high areas, you're not gonna have panhandling in that area.
We thought about handing out vests for the panhandlers, but have that sign on the back of it. And we thought, no, let's not do that.
We've talked to the street, I'm sorry, go ahead. We've talked to the street department and they've certainly said that, you know, we can make that happen. They can make these signs. I think he, he made that sign in like a day or two. We had it, we had it in like a day.
Well, I can kind of see it first, using them a lot of places around town, but then like, you know, like make them temporary and then just kind of step back and then, you know.
If you have time, you wouldn't need as many.
On social media too, you can make the flyer digital.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if this is the plan we wanna go with, we'll be pushing this out with a big press release and asking people to share it on social media and really try to get the word out.
Yes.
I like it.
I do too.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. I mean, I'd like it better if they didn't get to be on the media.
First clap.
Oh, they got, they got. That's their first hand copy. I'll second.
That was for you two there because you helped. The clap was.
Okay. All right. Folks, so we do have a motion and a second roll call. Motion passes. And item 12B, consideration discussion and possible appointment of three trustees to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board and approval of and authorization for the mayor to execute the official ballot casting votes for the three trustee appointments within, or with three-year terms commencing July 1. Curtis Green.[1577.76] the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board and approval of and authorization for the mayor to execute the official ballot casting votes for the three trustee appointments within, or with three-year terms commencing July 1. Curtis Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The item before you this evening is just the possible appointment of three trustees to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board. The Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, also known as OMAG, is a provider of general liability, auto, workers' compensation, property and risk management services for Oklahoma cities and towns. They've been doing that since 1977. City of Broken Arrow has been a member of OMAG since 1982. The OMAG group is governed by a seven-member board that's nominated and elected by its members, and the terms of the three trustees that are up at this point expire on June 30th. Six individuals were nominated to fill the three vacancies, and after a review of the biographical summary, staff recommends that the ballot be cast for Pam Polk, City Manager, City of Collinsville, Justin Battles, Assistant City Manager, City of Mustang, and Tim Lyon, City Manager, City of Midwest City. So our recommendation is that council appoint the three trustees and approve and authorize the mayor's execution of the official ballot.
Yeah, I, I don't know Lyon or Battles, but y'all are, you know, have relation with Pam Polk, and she's an amazing servant, so definitely, and if this is your recommendation.
Yeah, I'm good with them.
I'll make that motion. We have a motion and a second roll call.
I was pausing to give Johnny a chance.
I was still thinking.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jump in there anytime, Joe. All right, item 12c, consideration discussion and possible direction regarding Chapter 16, offenses miscellaneous, Article 1 in general, Section 1612, regarding cities disturbing the peace, disorderly conduct of ordinance, or unseated.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Mr. Schwab, council members, thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak to you. Recently, it came to my attention that there had been some calls go out as far as loud music disturbance in the Rose District. And the information that came to me is that there were two different groups of people who, who had voiced concern. One were residences who were residing above some of the entertainment districts or entertainment venues, and the other is the actual business owners who have invested in those businesses in the Rose District. It's kind of surprising the fact that it's 2023, and this is just now becoming something that is a concern. The city anticipated the council may receive a request to change the current ordinances to allow for music later in the night. Conversely, one or more of the residents may contact council to restrict the time limits that is associated with ordinance 1612. The only thing I will read on 1612, you were provided, that for the purpose of the section, the creation of any of the noises that is listed in the ordinance between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., Sunday through 30, Thursday, and the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., Friday through Saturday, in such a manner to be plainly audible at a distance 50 feet from the exterior of the building or structure will be part of the violation of this section. So I bring it to you just for discussion and direction to staff. If you want to leave it the way it is, if you want us to look into changing it, it's completely up to the council.
Curtis, did you send the email that I received, did you send it to the rest of the council?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the only person that had reached out to me, and they said it was mainly like the workers, it really wasn't like the, like, you know, when the things are happening, it's just like after the hours and, but, I mean.
So legally, how late can, I mean, businesses can stay open as late as they want, right?
Vice Mayor, there are restrictions if they serve alcohol, that's regulated by the ABLE Commission, that's not up to us in terms of those hours, but this body does have the power to regulate the noise ordinance as it sees, as it sees fit. So if it wants to change the hours, it certainly could consider doing that.
But typically, I mean, like a bar, or a restaurant that has alcohol, I mean, what I know they're open till 2:00, a lot of, I mean, not a lot, but many are open till 2:00. I mean, that's, that's the, right? That's the law, like, yes, I know that's the law. I don't stay out till 2:00, but I could. So, okay, so I'm, I'm just confused why, I mean, because we have an ordinance that's like really, like, it's, actually, I think it should be later, because if we're wanting to create more entertainment in the Rose District, I mean, it's my opinion.
Arts and entertainment district.
Yeah, and, and they potentially could stay open till 2:00 a.m. if they wanted. I, I don't, I don't understand. I'm, I'm sorry.
Current noise ordinance has been in place for the last 15 years, and you're correct that the nature of the city has changed. Other communities who have dealt with this issue have taken different approaches. For example, Oklahoma City has various noise levels depending upon what the land use is. So for their arts and entertainment area, they'll have a louder decibel level. Those are certainly options that are available, so there's, there's different ways to approach it.
Okay.
One thing I would add is, and Chief Barry Hill can certainly correct me if I'm, if I'm misspeaking, but our, our police department does not currently have a way to measure the noise level.
Because I, and I can't read up there, I copied it into my notes, but is it like 50 feet away, like if they can't hear it 50 feet away?
So one minor clarification, if you look at the general prohibition, it really starts out with, it's really any noise of such character duration as to be loud and unnecessary to a person of ordinary sensibility. So that's the general prohibition, and it's very broad, it's going to be fact-specific. Typically, in these cases, we rely upon the complaining party to file a complaint by citation. These are misdemeanors that are not typically committed in the presence of one of our law enforcement officers. And then to prosecute it in court, you'd have to have that reporting party give the facts and circumstances under that situation. Assistant City Manager Stevens is absolutely correct on the noise hours. Those make it easier to prosecute those cases because it, it makes it a what's called a prima facie case, which means if we can just prove those elements that this noise happened within 50 feet between these hours, we should get a conviction in those cases. But that's just, that doesn't overcome or, or limit the broader nature of the, of the initial section.
Okay. What, what would be 50 feet from a business? Like, like, I don't know, like what's across the street?
A lane, center lane of a traffic or stormy, so two lanes, 24 feet. So it gives you an idea, 50 feet is like four lanes.
Okay.
So if you could hear it across the street on the Rose District, that would probably be too loud.
And one of the other things that happens is it, it's the bass that creates some of the disturbance, just because it vibrates, you know.
And we have old buildings.
Old buildings, but we do have an arts and entertainment district, and one of the things we work very hard towards is our, even though we have fantastic restaurants, by nine o'clock, everything was rolling up the sidewalks because there wasn't anything to do.
Right.
So the creation of the, of the venues is really an exciting option to keep people in our Rose District later into the evening and spending their, their, their sales, or spending their dollars.
Absolutely. And that's something we've wanted for years, the one thing we were missing was evening.
Yeah.
And this is saying exterior. So if the sound is coming from the interior up, then is that defined 50 feet or?
No, again, that is, makes it easier to prove the violation. You still could potentially have a violation if it's such a character ordination, it's loud and unnecessary to a person of ordinary sensibility, regardless of that distance. So if you read the very, if you could scroll up on the ordinance, please. Yeah, so if you just read Section A, the general prohibition is it's unlawful to willfully and maliciously disturb the public peace by creating any noise of such character ordination as to be loud and unnecessary to a person of ordinary sensibilities. That doesn't include, doesn't matter the 50-foot distance, it doesn't matter the times. But again, to prove that type of case, you'd have to have the complaining party, you'd have to have competent evidence to, to prove that it was of such a character that it's, it's going to disturb a person of ordinary sensibilities. It's easier to prove the 50-foot and the time.
I, I think we need more of a proof or whatever that there is definitely a problem. I mean, you know, we're going with one letter, you know, so far, and it is the, the Rose District. You know, I live a quarter of a mile across the expressway from Moskowitz, and we can party on our back porch with their music. Seriously, but in the summertime, it's a little bit harder because the leaves are on the trees. But, you know, I've, I've always felt like they're having a good time, and we live close to it, so that just happens. I don't want to see it get really bad, you know, if you have an apartment up there, but I just think it needs to be demonstrated there's more of a problem than, than what we're seeing so far.
Well, and I, I mean, I've received an email, and I've gone back and forth with the resident, and it's, it's someone who does live above, obviously, they can definitely hear the music, you know. And then, you know, I sent her the ordinance, and I let her know that, you know, unfortunately, you are living in an arts, arts entertainment district, and.
Right.
And that's, that's the hard part, and I, but I, I understand, like, wanting to, you know, if I want to go to bed at 10:00 p.m., I don't want to have a party still going on, so I do understand that for sure. It just is.
But at the same time.
You're living in.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, you chose a location that's.
There's a big difference.
Amusing than you.
There's a big difference between 10:00 and, and 2:00. I think maybe 2:00 might be a little bit, a little bit like, you know, what I made down there, because there is a lot of homes, you know, close to it.
But there are places that are open till 2:00 in the Rose District.
I know, that's what I was saying.
But there could be, I mean, potential, my thought, though, is we need to look at what the future might be, and like, I mean, I'm not saying it should be like party central in the Rose District, but, but definitely, I, I just, I mean, obviously, I've been to those venues, and it's, they're not, these are not.
Yeah, I never thought, yeah.
Venues that you're like, have a lot of bass. I don't even know that they have a subwoofer, and maybe we need to hear from them, so.
Yeah, do you guys?
I don't.
So we'll go ahead and put a little bass, like, you need, I have a subwoofer at my house. Enough about subwoofers.
Yeah. Okay. We'll have the citizens speak. We have Brian Dean.
Thank you for making this a quick response. Being the, the business that actually resulted in that letter, I'd like to just state a few things. We've been there since December of 2018 and have had zero calls prior to this. In that time, we've grown twice, four years, just a small little startup. We currently employ 49 people that most of which live in the city, spend their money in the city, and love the Rose District. In that time, we've, we're approaching 400 different nonprofits and school organizations that we've supported, many of which are annual. The staff is what I'm most proud of. We have Raymond Bible students that work for us, we have single moms, we have moms and dads, and we have families that work for us, we have multiple mother-daughters, mother-sons that work for us, and they certainly don't want to be called or suggested that they're degenerate people. What is being confused is a party downstairs is actually just business. Because we close the doors at 10:00, those doors aren't actually closed. Customers walk in at 9:59, they're served food and drinks. It is our policy that we do not make our customers feel guilty for walking in one minute before close. We do not stick our chairs on, on tables, we do not mop around their feet, and we do not turn off our music. In our main original dining room, we have pendant speakers that are just designed for background music, what you hear in every restaurant. We did make an addition this last year to open up a live music venue that would be held for Friday and Saturday nights, originally scheduled to stay open till midnight. As a result of one complainer, we lowered it back down to 11:00 for Saturday nights, and we remain closed at 10:00 on those evenings. 90% of the time that this person has texted nasty messages, stomped their feet on the floor like a spoiled child, or called the police department and wasted their time. It is for our customers. What this ordinance is failing to see is that if you are to keep the ordinance the way it is without defining exactly what that is, we literally need to actually shut down at 9:00 to make sure at 10:00 there's nobody making any noise. I guess that's it, but let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Okay, moving on to Calvin Thompson.
Calvin, before you start, we understand people get excited, but we have to keep decorum in the audience, so if we can refrain from.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm counsel, mayor and vice mayor, assistant city manager. It's an honor to get to present to you, I've never done anything like this before, thank you for the coaching. My address is 8413 Shadowwood Avenue in Indian Springs in Broken Arrow. As of 10:00 this morning, I have signed a one-year lease at 118 and a half South Main Street in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. If you're not familiar, I'm about to tell the whole city where I live. Just totally fine, you could kind of know where I am most of the time, anyway. I'm moving above one of our newest and fastest-growing establishments, The Lodge, which features incredible live music and several drink options that are available. It's brought in another sense of lively entertainment to our beautiful and blossoming Rose District. I am aware I have walked by this establishment, I know what I'm getting myself into, I realize that on the rare occasion that I'm off on a Friday night and maybe I have to catch a flight the next morning, I realize that I'm running the risk of having music being played for a long period of time later into the evening. I am willing to accept that risk. Now, as most of you know, I am also a employee of Waters Edge Winery, and it has been a saving grace for me, it's the best job I've ever had. It's cool working just directly under local business owners that I have grown to respect even as a customer and now as great friends. What I will say is it's hurtful to hear, hear things about me and my friends that we are, that we are drunks, that we are unsafe, that we are endangering the public. It's, it's hurtful for someone that I don't know, I have nothing against anyone, I just wanted to go on record to say that I believe that the team that we have and the, the people that are in this organization want nothing more than to see the city of Broken Arrow thrive, to see Rose District thrive, that we're engaging with citizens and engaging with people around us. And what I will say is every Friday night, I see a bunch of well-dressed people come in, and I'm always asking, what are you doing tonight? And they're saying, we're going to downtown Tulsa. We are just stop number one. I would love to see Rose District become a place where we are enjoying a well-deserved weekend for the entire donation, duration of their evening. I appreciate your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael McCoy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Assistant City Mayor, I want to start with, may it please the court, I've been an attorney since I was five. I'm here on behalf of the person who instigated the complaints. She's a high school teacher. She moved into a mixed zoning where there's residence and commercial, not knowing that she would have this issue. She doesn't mind noise during regular business hours. I've seen the phone records, her first telephone call was made to the police, was made on a Sunday night, the business closes at 8:00 on Sunday, it was made at 12:38 a.m. when they were still partying inside. She's contacted the owner, she's contacted employees, and she's contacted her landlord to see what can we do to tone the noise down after you close, because the employees stay to clean and such after it's closed, and they crank up the volume. So it's not, she doesn't want to stop the businesses in downtown, she thinks it's a great place, she's wanted to live downtown for ages, but as a school teacher, she's got to get up in the morning. And so if they're going to be allowed to run noise until after midnight every night of the week, she's going to need to be able to move. Her suggestion, after having the police come and talk to her, was that even though they can hear the noise outside, they don't have the authority to write a citation unless she's willing to go to court. And she said, I can't just stop teaching school to go to court and sit around waiting for my case. I think the police, if they can hear the, the noise across the street, ought to be able to go and cite the people because they've witnessed a misdemeanor being committed. It's like if you see somebody speeding, you can stop them and give them a ticket. I see no difference. If the police witnesses someone committing a crime, they should be able to act on it. Again, we're, we're not trying to stop any of the businesses from being in business, the Rose District's a great place, I go down there a lot myself, but it's, it's the after-hours parties that have been the problem, and they do take place. So.
Thank you.
The teacher in question had a function at school that, so she couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here on her behalf as family member and attorney.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Or kind of looking for direction?
I mean, I, I feel like, and, I mean, my, I keep going back to, I understand people want to sleep, but the business has a right to, I mean, these, the owners, regardless of what they're doing, they have a right, if they want to hold an after-hours party in their business, they could be having a private party. I know I personally have used their business for a private party, and we don't tell them you have to shut your doors at a certain time. And I, I've been there a lot, and a lot, and my daughter actually used to work there and all, I mean, and she was one of those single moms that, that Brian Dean spoke about, and it's, the thing is, one of the things that I've said about, when I've talked to Brian about his business, I said, your business has nothing to do with how great your food is and how great your wine is. It has to do with you as an owner and your employees, because when you walk in there, people feel like they belong someplace. And, and so. And so saying that, yeah, people do hang out sometimes after the, and just hanging out, talking after, because Brian does like to talk, by the way, so. But it's, I feel like at an entertainment district, we really do need to look at the ordinance and because it's just going to be something that continues. And we want, the whole point is, of an entertainment district is to have entertainment. Whether that, and there's going to be a lot of things. Yeah, we can't since we've already...
Well, I just want to say that I don't, I don't think, I don't want to be part of government that gets into business. That's not what we need to be doing. So for me, it's pretty simple. You're a business. You run your business according to to your way of running it as long as it's within, you know, the law. Now, if we need to re-review and take a look at the ordinance, then yes, let's do that. But in the, at the end, it's not government's place to meddle into business. I don't want to get into that.
So Trevor, is there a way we can make a, like we can have an ordinance that's just separate, like the noise ordinance would be different for the overlay district or for Main Street versus the rest of the city?
Yes, you may do that.
Okay. And even, I'm thinking even like New Orleans Square or other places that maybe have, I mean, potentially venues at them. So we probably need to to look at, I don't know. I mean, my thought would be exactly what Joe just said and also look at what we can do to change just that area. Because it wouldn't be the whole overlay district, because that's a large area that's...
You have full discretion on how you want to draw those boundaries in terms of the noise. Like I said, some of the cities that have done this have used it through decibel levels and that gives you an objective, you know, measurement. You know, sometimes when you have bright line rules, it's easier to enforce, right? If you have specific measurable scientific levels. I'm not suggesting you go that way. That's just one option. So you do have a lot of discretion in this area.
And it's some of the same scenarios where someone lives upstairs from a nightlife or a restaurant or something?
Right. So for example, the decibel levels for Oklahoma City vary from 55 decibels to 80 decibels, which last time I looked at my Apple Watch, said that repeated exposure to the 80 decibels would cost long-term hearing damage, which I already have. So it could get, in some of the, like for example, you know, you could have quite loud noises depending upon, you know, what the bodies, what the council is interested in allowing.
We don't have a way of measuring that either, so.
My understanding from the police is they don't currently have those, but I do believe that decimeters are readily available. I don't know what the price is on those types of things. I defer to the chief on how that's worked in terms of enforcement for other communities. I think he might have had some conversations with some other law enforcement organizations on that.
Well, I can imagine, I mean, obviously if you're just driving down Main Street, because I don't ever recall like hearing the music inside when I'm just driving down Main Street. But obviously, if you're right above it, you're going to hear, you're going to hear the music when you're right above, you just are. But I don't, I don't, I don't know that you, you know, that's not going to be stopped. They have every right to be a music venue, to play music and have live music until the noise time, so.
Well, I think maybe we should ask the police department to look into the decimal meters or whatever. Maybe we need to look at that. I'm just thinking like even in my neighborhood in Stonemil, we had a church event and they're great neighbors. But I know there was a church in Bigsby and maybe it wasn't such the great neighbors.
Yes.
And I mean, I don't know what Bigsby did or what, but like we, right now, we're, the church is amazing. Like it's not a problem, but they're right up against a house, like five houses, actually.
We've had complaints about live church, but...
So I don't think the decimal thing is a bad thing to look into and, I mean, surely not. I think our code enforcement actually has it, honestly.
We've actually had this once before, well, probably several times, but more recently at the Tiger Football Stadium. The houses to the south were complaining about the band and the noise. We actually used a decimal meter. I believe we have one. And I remember going out on Friday night, walking through the neighborhood, recording the readings and walking up by the stadium and recording the readings. So it is possible. It is something that can be done. And I would just suggest that we look at the ordinance again and come back to you.
And it might be something that community development could help with, like determining the area, like what would be the best areas?
Potentially through your zoning, the more that we go with mixed uses, we're going to have this a little bit more. So I do think it's time to take a look at this ordinance, listen to the police, listen to community development and some of the other people and bring something back to you.
I think it's important to remind the citizens, I mean, you choose to live next to a football stadium or in Tulsa, you choose to live next to an airport. I don't, I don't, I mean, sometimes...
Or firing range.
Yeah, gun range. I mean...
That happens.
The business has just as much right to do what they do as the citizen does to choose where they live, so, I mean. I just don't want to mix a lot of this. It's pretty, to me, it's cut and dry, but...
So then that direction is just to have the department look?
Yeah, if you want to have staff take a look at it, just direct that. We can come back with something.
Do we need to make a motion? Just to make a motion?
You can if you want to. What I'm hearing is it sounds like you'd want staff to come up with some type of limits that address the mixed use nature, maybe look into the decimeter
Yes.
and review and come back to this body with some potential solutions based upon some of those issues. And if that's the case, I think we have our correction.
Yeah.
And you know, I know as we visited before we started on the downtown area, visited with other communities, I don't ever recall a problem and they all had mixed use, you know, with the offices and living quarters upstairs and commercial down. But I don't recall ever having them comment that they had a problem with noise or whatever. They just knew about it before they went in, that they were going to have a noise there, so.
This is the first complaint I've had.
Yeah.
Since I've been on council for six years.
There are building materials you can purchase that actually are sound barriers that the owner of the building could put in that serve as a sound barrier, so.
And there's things we could even do as far as the code's concerned to help protect that too. You know, require that, you know, the insulation between that, if it is a mixed use type area, people may be living upstairs.
How you could do it now, but yeah.
No, I'm talking about future building.
Right.
I just feel like, I mean, it sounds like to me that the business was there before maybe the, I mean, it's just like, I mean, just like I said with our training center. I mean, we had the firing range out there and now people are building houses and now they're complaining because they're fired. You know, gun firing. Yeah. So yes, I think you have, I think, I think you're good with the direction that we want.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So we're good. All right. Item 12E, consideration discussion and possible approval of the nomination and appointment of a city councillor to the Visit Broken Arrow Board for an unexpired term expiring September 30th, 2023.
Jennifer Rush. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and Assistant City Manager. Jennifer Rush, Economic Development Manager. I'm here in place of Lori Hill, who's on a plane to Ireland right now. So, but we wanted to make sure to get this before you so we could get a new member of council on the Visit Broken Arrow Board for the next upcoming meeting in Maine. So we're just seeking a nomination and appointment of a city councillor to fill the unexpired term of former city councillor Scott Udi with a term expiring September 30th, 2023. The meetings at Visit Broken Arrow take place at City Hall. They're at 3:30 p.m. on the second Tuesday of every month.
I'm actually the substitute now, like if councillor Udi was not able to go, although he went to everyone, so I never got to be the substitute. I would love to serve on the tourism.
And then would we need an alternate if she's unable to?
Yes, he could appoint one as well.
Well, I would make the motion to nominate councillor Ford for the position and then...
I'll second that.
Do we need a vote on that individually?
Trevor.
Can we be the alternate in a second?
Do we need a vote for me to be on the tourism board?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a motion and a...
Okay. There's a motion and a second for councillor Ford. Do we need to hit that?
Yeah.
It's pretty bad when we come to it.
Okay. And then as an alternate?
Do either of y'all want to? I think I've got a meeting.
3:30 is hard for me.
I have a meeting that I'm on Tuesday.
Is that?
No, that's the third.
It's the third. Because we're both on the same meeting.
It's an alternate. I was trying to make everyone drop.
Especially Lisa, she won't miss.
All right, I will nominate Johnny again. Parks is the alternate. I'll second. So we have a motion and a second for Johnny to be the alternate? I mean councillor Parks.
This would be a voice vote. Franco?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Gwenski?
Yes.
Wimpy?
Yes. All right. Item 12E, consideration discussion and possible appointment of two council members to serve on the Broken Arrow Drainage Advisory Committee. Can you move?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councillors. So the item before you is the Broken Arrow Drainage Advisory Committee and the possible, a possible appointment of two council members. On August 6th of 2019, the council adopted ordinance 3588, which established the Drainage Advisory Committee. The purpose of that committee was really to provide several aspects to the council. It's an advisory committee to the council on our 2018 GeoBond Program Proposition 6. Proposition 6 identifies drainage improvements throughout the city, but there wasn't specifically any item named. So the council or the, sorry, the advisory board listens to potential projects, reviews applications and then makes some recommendations to the council. It also provides, probably one of the most important things, is it provides the public a process to input on the projects. So with that ordinance, we established a seven-member committee. Each councillor gets to appoint one person from the public and then there are two councillors that sit on it. Currently councillor Parks was nominated and approved by the council on September 3rd of 2019 for a three-year term. And then Mayor Wimpy was approved on May 4th of 2021. Councillor Franco was actually approved, appointed as Scott Udi's appointee. I believe that was in February of 2022. So as it stands right now, we have three councillors on that. So we need to consider the council. Do they want to keep it the way it is? And then Mr. Franco, councillor Franco would actually come up with another appointee regardless of how we do this. So the item before you is just a discussion. Do you want to keep it with councillor Parks and Mayor Wimpy? Or do you want to do something different? Completely up to you.
Well, and I know, yeah, councillor Parks, I mean, I think he's a huge asset to that committee just with his background in all things drainage.
That's a good way to put it.
Yes.
This is clean drainage, most of it is.
And then, I mean, it's up to you councillor Franco. I'm, I'm fine. I've got plenty of committees that I could, I could focus on other committees and...
I'm fine staying on.
Okay. So then now you'll, you'll need to find an appointment of a citizen to place on there.
Okay.
Very good. He's going to place his own seat on there.
Yeah.
This is good.
Yeah.
See, you wrote that down.
So do we need?
I need a motion, yeah.
So I will make the motion that Johnny, councillor Johnny Parks and councillor Joe Franco will be serving on the Drainage Advisory Board.
Very good.
And I'll second it.
Did you say, what did you say the terms were on that?
You're right, you already agreed. I saw four years just now. I'm like, whoa, I don't remember that.
And his term is up?
Councillor Parks would be September, the September.
The September.
But this would be a reappointment, so it would start over, yes, ma'am. And in other, on this board, when people have to leave or something, we'll just, we just find another appointee to fill out that term.
And they only meet about every other month.
It's when we have items that need to be addressed, so.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you very much.
Committee, absolutely, as we do. All right. Do we vote on that?
Yes.
Sorry. All right. 12F, consideration discussion and possible approval of the reappointment of Judd Hatch to the City of Broken Arrow Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring May 1st, 2026. Jill.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council and assistant city manager, Jill Ferentz, Acting Community Development Director. This item before you is for the reappointment of Board of Adjustment member, Judd Hatch. He's served on the Board of Adjustment for one term beginning in 2020 and the term is expiring on May 1st. So this item is to request the reappointment. He has also stepped up as vice chair on the Board of Adjustment and he's lived in the city of Broken Arrow for 19 years and serves very well in his capacity. So with that, we recommend the reappointment.
And I spoke with Judd and actually one of the first few emails or texts was like, "Hey, you need to start making some appointments." I'm like, "Oh, what? Okay." But, but, so the first two that I've, that I've been able to make, they both were just ecstatic. Yes, I'd love to. So Judd was happy to do this. So I would, I would make a motion to accept, to appoint Judd Hatch to the Board of Adjustments.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. And then item 12G, consideration discussion and possible appointment of one city council member to the City of Broken Arrow Wagner County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission Exploratory Committee. That is a mouthful.
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you. Many appointments tonight. This item, this committee was established on October 4th of 2022 and following that, the city made representatives that were appointed by the city council and county representatives were appointed from the county commission. And so with that, former councillor Scott Udi served as the main representative and we also, council also appointed an alternate with councillor Parks serving in that capacity. We have met on three occasions and we anticipate about two or three more meetings with this committee before we're ready to bring back a recommendation to city council. But with that, you know, we'd recommend councillor Parks that he would like to and at the council's discretion for an appointment of a main representative for this committee. And if you'd like to also appoint an alternate, that is an option as well.
Johnny, are you open to continuing? I'll make the motion.
Planning Commission, this is an important committee to our eastern boundaries out here, so.
I'll make the motion to make Johnny permanent and not an alternate for this committee.
And I do not mind serving as the alternate, seeing how it's Wagner County.
Very good.
Just as a...
Can we make that all in one motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Then I'll nominate Johnny and to be the main person and Mayor Wimpy to be the alternate.
Just as I just got off the committee.
Just a couple more left. Yeah, just a couple more.
They actually do meet the same night.
Do they?
They have. Uh-oh.
Yes.
We're good.
Oh, wait. I see what you did there, Johnny. All right. Item 12H, consideration discussion and possible approval of the appointment of Mindy Payne to the City of Broken Arrow Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire May 5th, 2026.
Yes, thank you. The seat that's up for appointment tonight is actually for Planning Commissioner Welpley. Welpley serves in that capacity currently and he's served for four terms since 2011 and he's let us know that he thinks it's time for it to be his last term. But he's been very gracious and been a great leader on Planning Commission. We're actually going to recognize him at our meeting next Thursday. So, but with that, Mindy Payne has served on the Board of Adjustment for a term and she's also now the chair of the Board of Adjustment and expressed interest, a lot of interest on serving on the Planning Commission side. So with that, we'd recommend her appointment.
And so my, my second appointment was with Ms. Mindy. And, and when I asked her, you know, would you be interested, it was, and I quote, "Thank you. Yes, yes, yes." So anyone with that kind of excitement, it was hands down, no question. She's here today. I appreciate you doing this and we look forward to working with you. And so I make a motion to nominate or to accept... And so I make a motion to nominate, or to accept Mindy Payne to the City of Broken Arrow Planning Commission.
I'll second.
I'd also like to make a comment. I've known her for years, and she is a very, very hard worker. She built, according to her, she built the New Orleans Square. She built that herself, and she's done exemplary work in her position now, so I think she'd do a great job. Now, before all that, she was a nurse that knew how to give shots. So I liked her a lot better in this position. She, she really works hard for the City of Broken Arrow, and I was excited to see that on our agenda.
In our school system, she gets to love on my granddaughter.
There you go.
I met Mindy, I think originally you were President of the PTA at BAFFA, and, and so we've known, and I appointed her to the Hunter, Hunter and First and Elm. Back then, it was not called New Orleans Square yet, so the Hunter.
Well, it was originally, and then it wasn't.
Yes, exactly. But it's been exciting to see you move up and, and take more leadership roles, so, very cool.
Yep. It shows.
It does.
All right. We have a motion.
Does she make it?
Apparently so, congratulations.
All right, 12I, consideration discussion and possible approval of the appointment of Rebecca Hinkle to the Broken Arrow Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring May 1st. Jill?
This item is for the vacancy that will be created with the expiration of Mindy Payne's term on the Board of Adjustment. And so Ms. Rebecca Hinkle has applied to be considered on the, on the Board of Adjustment, and these are three-year terms. And she does reside in the Broken, and the City of Broken Arrow has her 14 years and has also served on the PTA Board.
And she was my appointment, and I think you all know her, probably, you know, I think you know her. She's, wants to get involved with our city, and she's just got the sweetest heart, and, and she loves our city. I think she'll be a great appointment for this, to get her feedback.
All right, you have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right, 12J, consideration discussion and possible approval of the proposed East Kenosha Corridor Study.
Yes, thank you. This item is the East Kenosha Corridor Study, which is a general update to what was called the East Side Study back in 2009. And it really provided a, a plan for the East Kenosha area, which includes, it's east of the 23rd Street County Line Road in Wagner County. This study is updated as a goal also in the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2019. It includes a larger area in this update and analyzes the land use framework that we should be planning for, transportation patterns, open space availability, and infrastructure of an area in Broken Arrow that is rapidly growing and facing growth challenges. So we have had a lot of changes in the land use, a lot of development has happened since the original study was completed in 2009. And so we've worked with the consulting firm TSW and its Tulsa Office Director Katie Omealia and her colleagues to prepare the enclosed study. And Katie is here tonight to provide a short presentation on the highlights and to summarize the report. And Planning Commission did have this item on the agenda on March 9th, and it was accepted as, and recommended for approval as a report for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. Yeah, I'm excited to present this to you all. We've been working with staff on this project since last fall, so it's been a while coming. But, yeah, I just want to take you, I know you've got a long agenda, so I'll just take you through some of the quick highlights of the plan. Would you be able to maybe fit it to one page so we can see the whole page? Perfect, thank you. So like, like Jill said, basically, we looked at four different components to this update. So there was land use that we considered connectivity, both vehicular and pedestrian, parks and open space, and then specific site design elements like parking lots, building frontage, those kinds of things. You know, the, the purpose again is really just an update. Because there has been so much growth in this area since 2009 and so much new development, really the first thing we started looking at was a susceptibility to change analysis, so this is what we've started with. So basically, everything in pink that you see on the map is development that is already, already built or in the pipeline. You know, new subdivisions, it's, you know, plaques are on the way. So basically, it was areas that we could take off of the table in looking at the study. And so the areas left in the light gray color are really what's left over once you look at what's already been developed there. And so what are the areas of opportunity? So we started with that, and then we looked at the comprehensive plan, the future land use. We made sure that those were still appropriate for future development in these new susceptible areas, and looked at kind of the level of, you know, densities and things that were allowed, and made sure that we were still on track. And I think in most cases, we were, there were a few changes maybe up toward the turnpike area where Jill had talked about, the boundary had expanded. But beyond that, everything was pretty, still falling fairly well in line with the comprehensive plan. We then sort of looked at, we took that land use, and then we started, started looking at different patterns of development. So if, if these areas were to change in the future, what, what might they want to become? So we did a development framework plan, looking at where we would place mixed use, where we would place commercial or office developments, where are the better areas for a single family, those types of things. So that's what this map is depicting. And then we went through and we gave guidelines about the appropriate look, feel, style, design, how you would do a well, you know, developed, well-built mixed-use project. How would you do a commercial project that we would want to see? And we gave lots of imagery and pictures to kind of help in that guidance. So that's what these are. These are, you know, mixed residential, mixed-use projects, single-family, light industrial, all of the land uses that we had in the comprehensive plan. The third piece was the connectivity piece. So again, this is both looking at vehicular access as well as pedestrian, so trails, sidewalks, those types of things. Really, for the vehicular piece, we looked at the section line roads as well as connector roads. So there are a lot of subdivisions being built in this area, so it's important that there's connectivity out to those arterials and there's adequate connectivity. So looking at where the potential for those might go in these new areas if a subdivision was built. And then giving some guidance on what those street cross-sections might look like. How might you develop out those new roadways? We do have the caveat in the plan. We were probably four months into this study, and then the city initiated the Streets for All Project, which is kind of looking at complete streets. So we do, we do denote in here that basically anything that's finalized through that plan would kind of take precedence what we have here. But hopefully, they're using this as a guide to look at this area. And then, I'll go quickly through these. And then we looked at the pedestrian and bicycle facilities. There is quite a bit of floodplain area in like creek corridors and things that run through this study area, which is a tremendous opportunity to expand your trail network. And that includes sort of, you know, off, off-street as well as side paths or natural trails, hiking, biking, walking, those kinds of things. There is other types of open space opportunities. There are two old landfills in the study area that have the potential to be looked at or reclaimed as potential parkland. So we gave some guidance around those. And then, of course, streams, wetlands, and buffer areas, you know, how, how you should be treating those and looking at those as future development comes along. I really think, I think that's it, in terms of sort of the big broader things. When we got into site design, we really tried to just give staff guidance on, you're building more densely in a mixed-use area, like your downtown, right? You want to make, make sure that the pedestrian experience is sort of put to the forefront. So when you're thinking about site design, there's kind of key urban design elements that really ensure that that pedestrian experience is nice. So, you know, having the parking, large surface parking lots put toward the back of the building as opposed to between, you know, the street and the, the building front door, making sure there are white sidewalks, making sure that the doors and the windows at the ground level are really active with storefronts and lots of glass, and all of those kinds of things. So we gave a lot of general site design guidelines on what would make these different types of land uses well-developed. And so that's what you see here. And then access and circulation is also part of that as well, and parking. And really, I, I think that's it. You know, I think that as the, as the study area grows and you get new development, I really think this will be a nice tool for your planning staff to, to utilize in conjunction with your comprehensive plan to, to make future decisions about appropriate types of development as they come online. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions, if you have any, and otherwise, you know, it's been great working with the City of Broken Arrow on this project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How, how does this tie in now with the, it might be a question for Jill? With the comprehensive plan, as we adopt this or look at this or looking at it from not only the city, but from a developer's point of view?
So this, this document is very helpful. We've had a couple of, just a couple of conversations probably in the last six months of developers that were interested in pursuing a comprehensive plan change application, and we've let them know, we're actually in the middle of working on a study to help provide more specific guidance based on the East Side. So in that way, it will be helpful immediately. One thing that this study helped us to realize is we might need to look at our future development guide a little bit closer to make sure that it's accommodating some of the mixing of uses that are proposed in this plan. Right now, our, our future development guide, especially along the turnpike, has hundreds of acres that are all in Level 6. And, and what we're seeing oftentimes is one landowner is really wanting to see mixing of uses on their site by first starting with the residential portion of the development so that they can move forward on the commercial side. So having the ability to have some flexibility in there, I think will be important and key moving forward.
So when will you start? Are you starting to use this as a guide as far as the Planning Commission? Is that correct?
We will after tonight officially, yes.
All right, that, that was kind of my question, is when does it kind of go into play as far as reviewing it?
And I know a lot of this is like in my ward, and so I get more of the residents that want everything to stay the same. Anything to change, they're in the country and they love it, and I get that aspect of it, I truly do. But then we do have residents that would love to have something, you know, anything out in our area. So just having this, you know, just to be looked at and have a better understanding of what could be and the flexibility of, of making something happen would be great as well, so.
When can we get a copy of it if we approve it tonight? When we can get a copy of it?
We'll get it posted on the website this week, and then if you'd like a hard copy, we can get that printed for you too.
I'd like both, right?
Sure.
Thinking about being on this future committee that I'm on, you know.
There's a lot of drainage areas.
We know, we learn that, the hard way.
I'll make a motion to approve this study.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right, thank you.
Nice work, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, 12K, consideration discussion and possible approval of Comp 18-2023 Comprehensive Plan Change, One Gas Service Center located one half mile east of South Elm Place.
Yes, thank you. This comprehensive plan change application is a request to change from Level 2 Urban Residential to Level 4 Commercial Employment nodes on a 15.6 acre site located one half mile east of South Elm Place and one half mile north of New Orleans Street, also on the east side of First Place, more specifically. The property is unplatted, and the request before you is associated with a proposed expansion of the one gas facility. And, and they're planning to continue the existing use with an increase in intensity as far as the, we have the category of major and minor utilities in our zoning ordinance. And what they're proposing to do is really taking it over into that major category. And so according to the assessors' data, the service center was built in 1980, and the development calls for a new service center building with accessory storage structures east of the existing buildings. Proposed site improvements include parking, access drives, and material lay-down yards on the eastern portion of the site. And staff believes that these improvements, as well as the existing structures, would fall into the, the major utility facility category as mentioned. Those are allowed in commercial general zoning with a specific use permit or a PUD. And so the applicant's submitting this comp plan change in order to be able to request that rezoning in order to allow that expansion of their site. It's currently Zone R1, and what they've included in this packet is a draft PUD with the intention to, if this is approved, apply for commercial general zoning with the PUD. Also, the Planning Commission heard this item on March 23rd, and it passed with a four to, four to zero vote, unanimous vote, and there were no public comments on this item. So with that, and with the continuation of a similar use in the area with, I know the city facilities are really falling in line with this similar category on the west side of First Place, staff recommends approval of the comprehensive plan change from Level 2 to Level 4.
Turn a discussion?
The only question I have, this, is this really close to the homeowners that we just, they were just here? Is this, this is on First?
It is on First Place.
Yeah, the ones with, we talked about the sidewalks. Will this have sidewalks? Like that connected?
It will be required to have sidewalks, yes.
Okay.
Or either pay the escrow fee.
Okay.
So I, I saw that the back half of this is going to be a lay-down yard, and most generally, lay-down yards are because of equipment or material, which I would assume heavy trucks. Are the roads going to handle that? I mean, is that going to create any issues with?
So we don't anticipate any issues. We haven't done a specific road analysis for capacity for heavy vehicles specifically on this street. We don't anticipate issues with that. We do have other heavy vehicles, I would say, that travel on First Place, and we don't anticipate major change on that side.
Our streets in stormwater is right across the street, so we, we travel. I'll, I'll have big trucks.
Yeah, right.
It's a great question.
Which we're going to add to it, so I just didn't know.
Yes, exactly.
And I don't know how much, but that'd just be my only.
And actually, it was the original Highway 51, so honestly, I suspect there's concrete down below.
Yeah. Probably so.
Good question. All right, any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Roll call. 12L, consideration discussion and possible approval of Comp 464-2022 Cedars Multi-Family Floodplain. Jill?
Yes. This item is a request to change a comprehensive plan from Level 2, Level 3, and Greenway Floodplain to Level 3. It's 26.83 acre site. The property is unplatted and located at the northeast corner of Albany and 37th Street. The applicant's requesting to amend the area of the property shown as Greenway Floodplain on the comprehensive plan. And it's based upon the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, the special flood hazard areas. The applicant had received a letter of map provision from FEMA, removing a portion of the subject tract from the special flood hazard area. As a result, the request is to have the comprehensive plan, Greenway Floodplain portion of the subject tract match FEMA's determination. Instead of making that portion of the property Level 3 to match the surrounding Level 3 on the subject tract, or sorry, instead, excuse me. So basically, the area that's highlighted there is showing the area that's proposed to be Level 3. There is currently Level 3 in that area with the comprehensive plan, and so it's really lining up with the areas that are outside of the floodplain. So you did have a very similar request done before you late last year. The boundary has changed slightly. At that time, the applicant had not provided FEMA's approval for a letter of map provision, so that process has happened since then. And it, within the engineering that was completed at that time, it did adjust the lines a little bit, but it's very close to what it was. So we do have FEMA's approval and showing that this is in line with, with FEMA's approval on that end as well. Just wanted to note on the comprehensive plan map, the one that has the, the colors associated with it, there is a very small, at the northwest corner, very small tip of Level 2. So when you see Level 2 in the title of this item, it's just because of a very small portion. just because a very small portion of it included Level Two. It is a majority. That brown color is the Level Three that currently exists on the property. This item was heard by the planning commission in their meeting on March 23. And one resident submitted comments in opposition online, and concerns centered around possible construction of apartments. And two residents submitted forms in opposition but did not wish to speak. Their comments included concerns about water and soil environmental contaminants, as well as infrastructure and services capacity concerns due to an increase in traffic and crime from the proposed development. One resident spoke in opposition to the item with flooding concerns. So with planning commission and staff's recommendation, staff does recommend that the item be approved for Level Three to be changed as shown on the map. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So it was within Flood Plane before.
Correct.
FEMA came back and said, now it's not in Flood Plane?
Correct.
So what changed that it wasn't and now, or it was and now it's not?
I'm not aware of any recent activity that's happened on site. But when you kind of look at the aerial, you can see how it lines up with what's proposed. And sometimes the FEMA map just isn't as accurate as we get, as we would hope is actually what's on site. Because we're mapping out such a large area that are inaccuracies. And so I think what the applicant was trying to do was to make sure that it was as accurate as possible to really reflect what the base flood elevation is there and the areas that are outside the Flood Plane.
And I believe the engineer of record is here, if you have any questions for him.
He is here.
I, yeah, I mean, there's so much, I mean, I don't live out there, but it just, that's, we hear about flooding, flooding, flooding out there all the time. So it's just weird it wouldn't.
Alan, can you come down?
Sure, flooding to no flooding.
Yeah, can you answer the question if anything has changed, modeling or anything of that nature?
So there is modeling changes, but those, those changes, we haven't rippled actually the rest of the way down. Though there's actually a flow reduction that's not even reflected in this lomer that went through. This is really about the reclamation project that happened as a whole in that area. So the maps really reflected pre-reclamation, which was.
Okay.
What does that mean?
That was mine area at one point in time. And so that, whenever they did the reclamation on the mines, so we're talking 20 years ago?
I believe it was like 2010. I think I'd just started here. So, so what you're saying is they, they still were showing the old Flood Plane.
Right. So one of the things that especially the Department of Mines is really good about is not updating all of the studies and doing, following the regulations that we would otherwise have to follow whenever they do projects. So they were placing fill in areas that had since been studied and truly modifying the Flood Plane. But it was in theory, taking it theoretically back to historical, or closer to historically, the way that it was prior to the mining. What the application in front of you is really trying to correct the comprehensive plan to map the physical characteristics and now even the regulatory characteristics that were, that it was based off of originally. So the Greenway Floodway was the definition. And the comp plan said, everything that's Flood Plane is Greenway Floodway. Well, that's not really what the on the ground characteristics reflected. So if we went and developed in the places that the comp plan contemplated you developing, we would, we would be developing in the Flood Plane. But if we didn't, the places that were Flood Plane aren't. So this is correcting that kind of inaccuracy. And with the comprehensive plan, this, there is a pretty significant flow reduction that was done as part of the BA pond.
Our detention pond on the west side. So this is where our 37th Street Detention Pond, I couldn't come up with a better name, I guess. The 37th Street Regional Detention Pond is just west of here. So there was a flow reduction.
So the, basically, the box culvert that was constructed for 37th Street, because it didn't go through, it creates.
Detention.
A detention, an attenuation in the Flood Plane. So it creates ponding upstream and actually reduces peak flooding downstream.
Okay. I just don't want us to create more issues for the committee that we appointed members.
Come on. We appreciate that.
They already determined, they know. They're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this the one where, because I was watching the planning commission where the lady was, there was a resident that was opposed to it. But then when she, when she found out that that's what, she was like, oh, well, this, it's kind of like, oh, this is a good thing that we're changing it or something. Is that the?
Yes, that's correct. I believe one of her main concerns was the flooding in the area. So she was glad to hear that it's being updated to accurately reflect the Flood Plane area. And we just clarified that the, if the subsequent rezoning would come back before public hearing. And so I think she was glad that that was rectified. But we'll be ready to speak on any concerns potentially with development.
And just for the record, this is Adams Creek. So this is an area that we have, not just its location, but just the creek in general that we, we deal with. So, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
With a motion and a second roll call. All right. So let's see, there are no preview ordinances. Moving on to ordinances. 14A consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3780, closing a portion of utility easement from Blue Bell Creameries on property located one mile, one quarter mile west of 37th Street, one eighth mile south of Houston Street in Wagner County.
Hi Jill again.
Hello again. This item is requesting to close an easement by ordinance of the city. It's located on the Blue Bell property. And it's Lot One, Block Well, Block One of the Blue Bell addition. And the easement currently runs to the north and south and through the middle of the property and is currently in use and contains a water line. It's 20 foot wide water line easement. And so what's proposed is an ordinance to close that would actually be effective once the water line that is currently in the easement is moved and relocated, a new easement is accepted. And also that the construction department has also accepted the new water line to make sure that any utilities are cleared out before this ordinance is effective. This item was previewed at the last agenda, and staff is recommending approval.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 3780.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call. Item 14B is the emergency clause.
I'll make a motion to accept the emergency clause.
Second. The motion and a second roll call. Item 14C consideration discussion and possibly, possible adoption of ordinance number 3782, closing a storm sewer easement. Jill?
This easement is proposed to be closed and was dedicated as an offsite storm sewer easement for, that was associated with Phase One of the Village of Southern Trails Platte. The easement was recorded with Tulsa County. This easement does, the easement crosses the village at Southern Trails Phase Two, which is currently under the plating process. Staff has reviewed the documents and recommends acceptance and approval of the ordinance. And it was previewed on the last council agenda.
Motion to adopt ordinance 3782.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call. Item 14D is the emergency clause.
I'll make a motion to accept the emergency clause.
Now you can.
I know.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call. Item 14E is consideration discussion and possible adoption of ordinance number 3783.
This is a very similar item to the last one. It's also storm sewer easement requesting to be closed. That's associated with the village at Southern Trails Addition. And staff has reviewed the documents, and it was previewed at the last council agenda, and staff recommends approval.
I'll move to adopt ordinance 3783. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call. Item F is the emergency clause.
I'll make a motion to accept the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call. All right. Motion passes. Item 15 is remarks by governing body members. I just want to, well, first, I mean, congratulate Councilor Franco on his election to our council, looking forward to serving with you, and then reelection of our Vice Mayor and Councilor Parks. It's been, it's been great serving with you all. So congratulations on that. And then, of course, publicly thank former Councilor Judy for his time serving our city. And then, again, I'm honored to remain as the mayor of the city. So just wanted to share that. And then I wanted to let everyone know that our Mounted Patrol Unit is going to be graduating this Friday, which is pretty exciting. And everyone is invited. It's going to be out at the Roundout Club at 5:30 this Friday. And I was going to share just a few info or bits on, I should have already had this pulled up, so sorry. Okay. So additional info on our Mounted Patrol, the basic Mounted Patrol course has been completed. 40 hour course broke up over two weekends. That, this was in February and in March that they completed that. And we have, let's see, we have 18 officers that are active, but two of them, well, 16 of them are active and two are non-active, but they will become active in the future. And so that's kind of exciting. We'll be doing a grand opening and a flying of colors with the Mounted Patrol members, as well as the National Anthem will be sung by Ms. Wendy Wolf, who is a Broken Arrow resident. And it is open to the public, so that's pretty exciting. Then they'll also have a meet and greet on the Saturday. There's a lot going on this Saturday, by the way. Feel free to spend all Saturday with us. But at the Southern Ag, that's right behind Reesers in Broken Arrow, they're going to do a meet and greet from 11 to 3 p.m. And then we have a ribbon cutting at noon in Commendavilla, which everyone is also welcome to attend. Guts Church has donated new soccer goals there. And I know that they're going to be pretty excited about the installation of that. So we're doing a ribbon cutting. And then the FC Soccer, Tulsa Soccer players and the ORU Soccer players will be there doing a meet and greet and autographs and photos and such. So we invite everyone to come out there at 12.
Can I just say, that's so great for that community. Because, you know, that's, I'm just excited about that. The Police Department and Ethan Hedges, I think, definitely headed that up. And that's just a unique community. And so many kids. And when they've got the, you know, the water function out there, and then to add this, it'll, it'll give the kids something positive to do and, you know, it's good. I'm super excited about it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So that would be great. And everyone is welcome. So.
Yes, I would like to share. We have an event going on at New Orleans Square. It's the Post, this is the name. It's a very long name. Post Party Mardi Gras Family Friendly Fair. And it's Saturday in the southwest quadrant, which is the quadrant where McDonald's is, from 11 to 4 p.m., 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. There's going to be food trucks, games, vendors. There will be live music by the King Pabbage Brass Band. And they're going to perform from noon to 3 p.m. There's going to be a parade at 2 p.m. So dress up and bring decorated strollers and wagons and be in the parade. And, you know, it's sponsored by City of Broken Arrow in partnership with the Go Theater and the Bayou, which is the food truck that's right there by the theater. So it's going to be a lot of fun. And I hope everyone will come out. Well, you do not have to earn your beads, but I'm sure there will be beads.
If this one, then no left turns will be an effect.
No, not.
No, not.
So come out, you can turn left all day long. And I looked this up after the, one of the presentations tonight. We also have another event at Ray Harrell, and celebrating Earth Day this Saturday from 10 to 2. And face painting, guided hike, they're going to be making planners and other crafts, and some, like an award for cleanup. So, you know, come out to Ray Harrell Park.
Start at the farmers market.
Yes. Go to Ray Harrell, and then go, go to the, what's it, Commendavilla at noon? And then come over to New Orleans Square.
Got it all planned.
And then the Mounted Patrol.
Yep.
So.
We're good. Get your set.
That's exhausting.
So much fun. Anyone else?
We need to leave early and rest.
Need to rest up first.
Yes.
All right. City manager?
Just two things. On behalf of Mr. Spurgeon, congratulations. He looks forward to working with you, Councilor Franco, and continue working with the councilors that were reelected in this body. So I do want to take one minute and just bring to everybody's attention, I know you, some of the councilors have been receiving some phone calls about the work on Albany in front of the high school. Why haven't they shut down the left turns at the county line intersection? They actually wanted to give the traffic specifically to high school students, but the parents that bring their kids to the elementary school in the early childhood, they wanted to give them an opportunity to adjust to just the two lanes of traffic. We received word today that they are going to stop the left hand turns, so no left hand turns at the intersection. Supposed to be at 2 p.m. by 2 p.m. tomorrow, Wednesday. We talked to them a little bit, you know, why wouldn't you let school get out? Well, they actually want to have it in place before the rush hour traffic. So I believe staff worked with ODOT and the contractor. So I greatly appreciate that. But we will get the word out. Aaron's already working on it. He's already met with Broken Arrow Public Schools. They're getting the word out as well. So the, the no left hand turns at Albany, 61st Street, and 23rd County Line should be effective tomorrow afternoon.
I was going to say, if we got out here in time, people could go to the Tulsa International Airport. We have that on our flight coming in tonight, but they arrive about.
19 minutes.
Yeah. So I don't think we'll make it. But it is a pretty cool event. If you can ever make it out to the airport to welcome them home, it's pretty spectacular. So, okay, we do have an executive session. So I welcome, I.
I'll make a motion to take a recess to go into Bama and Beta.
Second. We have a motion and a second roll call.
Franco, yes.
Yes.
Parks, yes.
Yes.
Wumpy.
Yes. All right. I call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call.
Franco, here. Ford.
Here.
Parks, here.
Here.
Wumpy.
Here. And we do have item A to be removed or pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items?
Move to approve the consent minus item A. Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call. Item A is approval of the Municipal Authority Meeting minutes from the last council meeting. And we were going to do that separately. So that, since Councilor Franco was not with us then.
I'll make a motion to approve the Municipal Authority Meeting minutes.
We have a motion and a second roll call. There are no public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, or awards. There's no general authority business. Any remarks from governing body members?
I have none.
All right. We have no executive session.
Move to a turn. Second.
The motion and my second roll call. Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call.
Franco, here. Ford.
Here.
Parks, here.
Here.
Wumpy.
Here. And we will be pulling item A for the same reason as the last agenda. Are there any other items?
Make a motion to approve item B and C.
Second. Roll call. Item A is approval of the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve item A.
We have a motion and a second roll call. All right. Presentations. 5A, Presentation of Aspen Ridge Development Updates. Long awaited.
Good evening, chair, my chair and trustees. We saved the best for last, I think. So this is some pretty exciting updates with Aspen Ridge. We've had a lot of people in the community. We just actually made some business announcements of some things that are going into that area. So I wanted to invite Mr. Easley to come and address the council and. and kind of let you know where we are at with that development and maybe give some timelines and some different schedules to you.
Hello.
Good evening.
That was a fun two and a half hours.
Yes, it was.
Congratulations. And Councilor Franco, I look forward to getting to know you better. I think you've looked into, very impressed with who you are.
Appreciate it.
Update on Aspen Ridge. Things are going great, although it feels like sometimes we've been riding a unicycle across the Arkansas River. We have dealt with so many things in this project over the last year, year and a half, give or take, including Reesers being bought out unexpectedly. That kind of slowed things down. Stormwater design issues, figuring out how do you build a massive project on land that's never been developed? Obviously, that's been a lot of fun, but we're finally there. I can say that with confidence after talking to my closing company today. So kind of big picture update. Reesers will be doing their official groundbreaking. I think it will be May 9th, but they haven't officially told me that, but kind of leave that date open on your calendars. 63,000 square foot grocery store, outdoor space. We gave them more land than they originally wanted. We adjusted the plat. I don't know. Jill probably knows 500 times. So anyway, we've got Reesers ready to come out of the ground. They awarded their construction contract to Crossland last week. They're ready to come out of the ground. Come and go also is, is like, I literally had to run their construction guys off the property because they don't own the property yet. They're ready to come out of the ground. So Chipotle is ready to come out of the ground. So basically, everything on the north side frontage up to Reesers will be coming out of the ground here in the next couple of weeks. So we literally are finally at that point. We have right now 11 signed purchase-sell agreements with all national groups, with the exception of the Car Wash, which includes some local, local guys. But pretty much everything else is national. We have over 16 LOIs for rental space coming in. Again, almost all national. I have under contract and in purchasing the Core Church property, with the exception of the building itself. And I already have all the frontage on that sold. So we're in negotiation or probably conversation, better way to say it right now. But we're in conversation with three different hotel developers, trying to get a hotel out there. We are working with some other major retailers to come into that district as well. So all that being said, it's been a long road. The city has been incredible. I, I give you guys props continuously. I was with Matt Pennell this morning. I told him, we're working on a project together and I told him, I said, if, if they could work with me, like Broken Arrow works with me, we'll get this done. City of Tulsa won't, but anyway.
Just bring out your business.
Yeah, just bring them here.
Exactly. I, I know where to go. And you guys know that I work very hard for the City of Broken Arrow, working on some other, other sites and other developments that are moving around the city. But Aspen Ridge, to me, will be the, the absolute shining example of how to build a new retail development in a major municipality. And the partnership with the city, to say it's a private-public partnership is such an understatement in this case. So again, I can't thank you enough and I'm open to any questions. I'm under so many confidentiality agreements. And I appreciate your guys' understanding on that. We all know what's coming. I think I've had one-on-one conversations with pretty much all of you and told you everything I can tell you. So you guys know what's coming and we have big announcements coming very soon. The one that everyone wants to hear is, I think, going to still try to open in 2023, which will be, in my opinion, very difficult, but I think it'll be early 2024 at the latest. So, and Councilman Franco, if you want to know who that is, just talk to any of these. So with that being said, I'm, I'm, like I say, open to any question that you might have.
I still got to figure out how to make that paper mache statue of you, so.
Yeah, well, make it merengue.
Maybe in the center of the roundabout, maybe.
That's right. My roundabout. Yeah, yeah.
That's right. We're all trying to figure out what to put in the center of the roundabout.
Yes.
So if you guys want to pose for a picture after this, we can send it to Joe Slack in Oklahoma City and see what he can do.
Yes.
All right.
We appreciate all your work.
Yeah.
I know I bugged the heck out of you.
Not really until recently, and then I really have bugged you.
That's right.
I have like.
It's a love-hate relationship.
Yeah. Come on, come on. You've done great.
So excited.
Madam Chair, if, I met with mine, Daniel, who is Steve's right-hand man, construction manager, today to kind of line out the last few steps. I'll only talk about the ones that you mentioned.
Right.
Chipotle's has full building permit. They're free to go. They're, they're moving.
Yep.
They've met all of our criteria. Come and Go has one or two items that are pretty easy to address, and I think they can get that done very quickly. And as he said, they're, they need to close and they're ready to go. And see, no reason why Reesers won't have their full building permit, probably in the next few days as well. But no, certainly by the time that he was talking about on that. And the Detention Pond is out to bid. It should open the first week of May. So that's how come we were able to do the full building permits because that Detention Pond will be in construction.
Yeah.
A lot of activity.
And Kenny knows, or Kenny's, Kenny knows. You know, we've had to deal with everyone on this project, including he and I going to meet with the Turnpike Authority and working out some minor issues, but major issues all at the same time. Things that you and I would think, we're just going to do that and no one cares, but apparently people do care. But we've had great cooperation with the state, with everyone in your city. Literally, I think, I don't know that there's anyone in the City of Broken Arrow employment that has not been part of this project.
Pretty close.
So anyway, that being said, if you don't have any more questions, I'm going to finally go home.
We appreciate you very much. Thank you.
You still have a little bit more if you want to stay.
I'm, I'm that close.
All right. And then I don't think there was any action to be taken. No. All right, there is no general authority business. Remarks by governing body members? City Manager?
I have none.
Thank you. There is no executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Mr. Parks.
We need a second.
Oh, dumb, is it?
Yeah.
There we go. Oh, you're good.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
If I may, just take a brief recess so we can clear the room, please?
Yes. Take a brief recess.
That's what I know.
Clear the room.
And I'll second, I'll second that Lisa's motion.
Okay. We get Mr. Spurgeon.